It's four o'clock. All right, it is four o'clock and it looks like we are recording, so I will start our work session of November sixteenth, 2022, and call our meeting to order. The topic is reviewing the demographic disparity analysis with the Richfield Police Department, conducted by Bob Scales of Police Strategies LLC, and I will pass it over to City Manager Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be brief in my introduction because I want to leave as much time as possible for the presentation and question and answers. And please do feel free to ask questions as we go along. Richfield, as you know, is using more data citywide to determine how to improve our operations, and our police department has been an early leader in that effort. I commend the department for analyzing and sharing this data, and it's a significant amount. And I believe that in Minnesota, we are the only city other than Duluth to undertake such a public and comprehensive study. There's a lot to learn in this report, and we are still analyzing the data. While the report focuses on the demographic disparities, there's also a lot to learn about how our officers respond to calls and are working in our neighborhoods. There are positive findings in the report, and I'll let the presentation provide most of those details. However, as a city, we continue to be concerned that people of color, especially black people, are still more likely to be both a victim and a suspect of crime. Progress on equity in all areas is needed to close the gaps. To make progress, we need to better understand the problem, and the information shared tonight is one way we are trying to better understand the problem from the local law enforcement side, but there are many other areas in the city that need this same level of attention. Of course, as you know, the council has made equity a part of our mission, our vision, and our values. As a staff, we continue to build it into our analysis, our engagement, our processes, our programs, and also our policy decisions. Just a few of our cities that focus on reducing these kinds of gaps that I'm particularly proud of are our First Time Home Buyer, our Kids at Home programs, our Embedded Social Worker program, and changing our built environment like roadway. Tonight, Chief plans to provide a summary of those changes we have implemented in policing based on their ongoing efforts to ensure that all of our residents are connected to opportunity. So just to close this intro, I am glad we've done this analysis, and I look forward to how it fits with our other programs and policies in advancing our equity work. Just a reminder, we're trying to be more informal at our work sessions, so using first names, but I will introduce Jay as the Chief of Police, and he will introduce our consultant in the presentation.
Thanks, Katie. I'll just have a few opening remarks. The Richfield Police Department is one that is dedicated and caring, providing the city with a first-class police force where officers are put through a stringent hiring process that looks for character and guided by best practices and policy and procedures. We have consistently proven these principles through action via ethical department leaders, the commitment to continually analyze, adapt, and improve the service levels we've made over the last decade. This has included deep dives into quantitative and qualitative analysis in reviewing body camera, squad cameras, and our incident reports, bringing in an embedded social worker into the department. We are also planning on bringing in a second embedded social worker. I just sent the email today, so hopefully we get that back. Routine use of force reviews by command staff and instructors of use of force and emergency driving. Report monitoring, use of force dashboards, which now include disparity analysis. Interactive complaint documentation processes, including internal reporting and reporting to the state of Minnesota. Migration to a new data system, Tyler Technologies, in March of 2023, which will give us better data analytics with the new system. Most importantly, our Police Like a Champion campaign, which our motto is to police the Richfield way. This is a form of procedural justice that allows us to engage, relate, listen, and explain. The results translate to one call, one investigation, and one contact at a time. What you will see tonight from Bob Scales, the CEO of Police Strategies, is a three-month-long analysis of many forms of data. This is just one tool in our toolbox, so to speak, to look at ways we can improve. However, looking at the data, we are always looking on how to close gaps in what we do, in our disparities, in our relationships and programs in the community. With all further ado, I will introduce Bob Scales, the CEO of Police Strategies.
I'm very excited to be here. I thank you for inviting me. This is actually the favorite part for me of doing this type of research, is being able to interact with elected officials and police officials and community members, and my goal is to not convince you of anything, all right? My goal is to explain what we did and how we did it, and to really answer your questions and make sure that you fully understand what the data is that we're presenting to you. So in that vein, please, during the presentation, ask any questions, challenge me, argue with me. The more interaction we have, I think the better you're going to understand the data. So I have a PowerPoint presentation, and then I've got some screenshots from the report. I also have a couple of short videos to show, and with that, we'll start. Just a little bit about our company. We have sort of four principals in the company. Chief Sanford and Catherine Olson and I all worked for the City of Seattle. I worked for the City of Seattle for fourteen years. Chief Mike Sanford was an assistant chief in Seattle, and then he was the chief of police at a couple of other smaller cities in Washington State. Catherine Olson is an attorney. She was the head of the civilian oversight arm in Seattle PD for six years, the Officer Professional Accountability. And then we have partnerships with a number of universities around the country. Our main partnership is with the Criminal Justice Department at Seattle University, and Professor Matt Hickman is the chair of that department. Our goal, we formed Police Strategies in 2015, and our primary goal is to help law enforcement agencies collect, analyze, and report on their data, and we focus primarily on use of force data. And Richfield PD has been using our police force analysis system for a number of years. There are a number of reports that are online, as well as interactive dashboards. As we've gone and progressed with our force analysis system, we've done dashboards on other things, such as internal affairs and stops and arrests, and also we have done a number of demographic disparity studies. As the city manager mentioned, we have one in Duluth and Richfield PD, those are the only two in Minnesota, but it's a natural extension of our sort of data analysis because it's obviously a very important topic and discussed a lot, and that's what we'll focus on today. A little bit about my background. So I'm an attorney. I was a deputy prosecutor in King County, Washington in the 1990s. I was also a special assistant U.S. Attorney for the Western District of Washington. In my career, although data has not usually been formally a part of what I do, I've always tried to pull data into every aspect of my work. When I was a deputy prosecutor, we developed a vertical prosecution program for juvenile firearm offenders and our Armed Career Criminal Program with the U.S. Attorney's Office, and we collect a lot of data to analyze the effectiveness of that program and the outcomes of that program. I was also a public safety policy advisor for several mayors in Seattle, worked on every possible public safety project you can imagine, homeless encampments, drug crime, chronic inebriates, gun trafficking, and racial profiling. In 2000, the Seattle City Council formed a racial profiling task force, and I was staffing that task force. That was a task force that was half law enforcement, half community members. So I've been working in sort of public safety and data and government for many years now. I was involved in the Seattle consent decree, so the Department of Justice came into Seattle in 2011 and did a pattern of practice investigation. I was in the city attorney's office at the time and represented the city during that investigation. That subsequently led to a consent decree, and the mayor appointed me to be the compliance coordinator to oversee the reforms in the police department. And then I told you about Police Strategies as well. One thing I wanted to mention, it's not on here, but I live in Bainbridge Island, Washington, which is a small suburb, it's actually almost identical in size to Richfield, and I served two terms on the Bainbridge Island City Council and one year as mayor. So I'm very familiar with local government and particularly cities the size of Richfield. On a personal note, I lived in Minneapolis in the 1960s. My father went to grad school at the University of Minnesota, and then he worked at the Guthrie Theater, so I lived near Lake of the Isles. So it's always nice to come back and visit Minneapolis area. Okay, before we get into policing and racial disparities, I wanted to take the same sort of racial disparity concepts and look at it in a medical setting as opposed to a police setting. So medical errors are the third leading cause of death in the United States. Two hundred and fifty-one thousand deaths a year, and there are racial disparities when you compare those deaths with the population, significant racial disparities. There are two hundred and fifty-one thousand deaths out of thirty-five million hospitalizations, which is about a 0.7% death rate. So if you go into the hospital for a medical procedure, you're less than 1% likely to die from that procedure. Now, there was an article that I read in the Annals of Surgery from 2006, and it looked at race and surgical mortality in the United States, and it looked at data in a very similar way to how we look at data in policing. And what they found was that black patients were 50% more likely to die after surgery than white patients. And it's important to, throughout my presentation, we're going to talk about benchmarks. Benchmarks are the be-all and end-all of racial disparity studies. If you use a bad benchmark, you're going to get bad results. If you use a good benchmark, you're going to get better results. So the question is, what benchmark did they look at for the racial disparity study here? So they looked at the number of operations for black and white patients, and then they looked at the death rate compared to the operation. They didn't use the population, right? They looked at the number of people going in for operations because they were the population or the group, the benchmark, that would be likely to die from the operation, not your general population, people that aren't going to the hospital. And they looked at a lot of different factors, the type of operation, the patient characteristic, the hospital characteristics, and their conclusion was that black patients have a higher operative mortality risk across a wide range of surgical procedures, in large part because of the higher mortality rates at the hospitals they attend. So they found a number of different correlations, but what they found was the strongest sort of causation was where the hospital was located. And so the hospitals in poorer communities tended to have lower skilled surgeons, they were overcrowded, they didn't have equipment, there were lots of waiting times, and those hospitals were located in communities that had a higher population of black residents. So what they were seeing is that it was actually the condition of the hospital and the location of the hospital that was driving the racial disparities in deaths during surgery. They didn't conclude that the doctors were biased against black people, and they were making more mistakes against black people. It was all based on the hospital, the quality of the hospital, and where the hospital was So this leads us to sort of the correlation versus causation. So there's a correlation. A correlation simply means that there's some relationship between two different variables, and it can be either a positive correlation where the two variables move in the same direction, or negative correlation where they move in the opposite direction. So there tends to be a correlation between education level and salary. So the higher your education level, generally the higher your salary when you get a job. So that's a correlation. But a causation is when a change in one variable causes another variable to change. So we know that sunlight, right, there's a correlation between when the sun comes up and midday that the temperature tends to rise, and we know that the sun causes the temperature to rise. So there's both a correlation and we know causation. Now, we can infer during this correlation with education and salary that education tends to allow people to get better jobs, but we can't just tell from the simple correlation that that is the causation. So similarly, the correlation between the hospitals and particularly predominantly black neighborhoods and a higher mortality rate after surgery, but without studying each hospital and collecting quantitative data on surgeries, you're unable to determine the cause of what is causing the disparities in mortality rates at these different hospitals. You have to look at all the possible underlying factors that could result in that correlation. You can't just sort of look at one factor and say, oh, this is the only reason that mortality rates are higher. So you've got to look at a lot of different factors when you're trying to determine causation. So then deaths from police use of force. One of the big problems with police use of force is that there's no data anywhere, and that's why we started our company, was to help, you know, sort of bridge this gap, because there's lots of talk about use of force and lots of policies, lots of legislation surrounding use of force. Very little of it is based on data or science. And so what we do have, we have, because there's no national data source for deadly force, there are few state data sources. California probably has one of the best databases on deadly force incidents. They collect about 700 incidents a year for the state of California, but there's certainly no national database, and so what's happened is that you have groups like the Washington Post or Mapping Police Violence that have crowdsourced information from public records requests and from media reports, and they have built literally the best data that we have on police uses of deadly force, coming from these media groups and private organizations. And so based on the information that they have, if we look at deaths for hospitalizations, you have a 0.7% death rate. For policing, there are about 1,200 deaths a year, according to these crowdsourced sites, and there are approximately 10 million arrests a year, which is obviously a much lower death rate in policing, 0.01% of people who are attempted to be taken into arrest or killed by the police. So one way to look at the data is that you're 70 times more likely to die due to a medical error during a hospitalization than you are to die from a police arrest. So one of the organizations I mentioned was Mapping Police Violence. Now, the big debate, and what I've been involved in this debate, a lot of academic researchers, a lot of media organizations are involved in this debate, is, you know, how do we analyze policing data? What's the best way to look at the data? And how can we make the most use of the results from that analysis? And so a lot of organizations, particularly media organizations and advocacy groups like this, they want to use population as a benchmark. Population will always produce large disparities for groups that have very small populations. It's a given, except for some groups, as we'll see. So this is from the Mapping Police Violence website, and they looked at police killings per 1 million people in the U.S. But then, instead of looking at annual data, they looked at 10 years of data. There's one problem right there. But they looked at 10 years of data, and so we're looking now at police killings per 1 million people. So Pacific Islanders, over this 10-year period, had 87 individuals killed per million population. Black individuals had 61 people killed per million. Native Americans, Hispanics, and then whites were 21, and then Asians down at 7.2. But bear in mind, this is a 10-year period. So the great thing about mapping, I'm very critical often of mapping police violence, but one thing that they do really well is that they provide all the raw data for download, so anyone can download their data and look at it and do their own analysis. So that's what I did, and I looked at, well, what are the numbers that we're talking about here? So here are the numbers from 2021. So again, not the 10-year period, but the most recent year, the full year, 2021. And in 2021, there were eight Pacific Islanders who were killed in the United States by the police, and that's a rate of 8.7, which is 1/10 of their 10-year average there. 266 black people were killed and 6.1 annual rate per million, and so forth down the line. So you can see that, well, it looks pretty shocking here when you compare Pacific Islanders to all these other groups, but we're talking about a sample size of eight people, eight people in the country, and the reason that the rate is so high is because the population is so small. So again, these are extremely rare events where a very small, if you're dealing with a small denominator, a very small change would dramatically impact these results. But the way this is presented to the public is that we've got evidence now, they're focused on black. They didn't really focus on Pacific Islanders, even though the rate was much higher for Pacific Islanders, but the narrative that is presented is that black people are much more likely than other racial groups to be killed by the police. And that is, using this calculation, that is absolutely true. The question is, is this the most meaningful calculation to use when calculating someone's risk of being killed by the police? And most of my presentation is going to be about why population is not the right benchmark and why there are much better benchmarks out there that will produce much more meaningful results. And it's not just my opinion. So this is, many, many peer-reviewed journal articles, academic articles, are critical of population-based methodologies. I'll talk about some of the new research that's being done at the Center for Evidence-Based Policing in Cambridge University. So I know that this topic creates a lot of angst and concern, and it's important to not just take my word for it, but to look at the research that's out there and really try to understand the methodology and see what's made more sense to you. So I actually just got back from, or I was just in California doing presentations for the California Chiefs Association on their RIPA data. So about five years ago, the California State Legislature passed a law called the Racial and Identity Profiling Act, and that law requires every law enforcement agency in the state to collect a lot of data on every single stop that they make, whether it's a traffic stop, a pedestrian stop, any type of stop. And there's a RIPA board that was created, that's sort of half law enforcement, half other community organizations. They produce reports. There are a number of organizations like the ACLU and the Public Policy Institute in California that have looked at the data and done reports. And so what I was presenting to the Chiefs Association was essentially a critique of the program and providing recommendations on how the data collection program can be improved to provide more meaningful results, and also a critique of the methodology used for the analysis. And what you're going to see in one of the videos is how the data is being used to promote a certain narrative of policing in California. And the reason I'm presenting that is because that narrative is not unique to California, it's all across the country. So the goal of the Racial and Identity Profiling Act is to eliminate racial and identity profile. So you start with the assumption, right, that this is a big problem, and the goal of collecting the data is to somehow eliminate or reduce this problem. And then another goal is to improve diversity and racial and identity sensitivity in law enforcement. Now, the data is not going to do that, and yet, that's what this act was written to do. If we collect the data, if we analyze the data, somehow these two goals and objectives will be reached. So as you all know, this is a pretty controversial topic, and people have very strong opinions, and so it's very hard to have a purely scientific statistical discussion about racial profiling. But that's what I'm going to try to do today, and I'm not trying to advocate one way for one position or another position. My whole goal is to try to help law enforcement agencies, elected officials in the community to understand the data. The data is what the data is, and the question is what we do with it and how we interpret it. And so what I've found in my career is that if you really understand the data and you've got a problem in local government, and you've got good data and a good analysis, then you can use that data to make data-driven decisions and develop evidence-based best practices to solve the problem. So that's the ultimate goal here. So one of the things I asked these California chiefs over two meetings, there were 250 chiefs there and command staff, and one of my first questions to them was, because they're all being required now to collect this data, my first question was, does your agency condone or allow racial profiling or biased policing? Not a single hand went up, and that's not surprising because it's illegal and unconstitutional. So there's no department that's going to have a policy that would say it's okay to racially profile. In fact, the opposite. Most departments have specific policies telling their officers, you cannot do this, and if you do this, you will be disciplined. So we've got law enforcement agencies saying, nope, we don't allow it, we don't condone it. So the next question is, do your officers engage in racial profiling or biased policing? Now, we know that police misconduct occurs, right? There's no department that's perfect. Every department has an internal affairs section, every department gets complaints, and sometimes officers are, those complaints are sustained, and officers are disciplined and sometimes dismissed. Every department, nobody's perfect. So there's no question that racial profiling occurs, and there is racial bias in policing. I mean, nobody's going to, I don't think anybody's going to deny that and say, no, police are perfect. The rest of society has systemic issues, but police are perfect. Nobody's going to make that claim. The question is, that we all want to know from the data, is how bad is it? Is this a systemic problem that's going on on a regular basis, and that's driving the racial disparities? Is this sort of a one-off thing that maybe one or two officers may engage in occasionally? I mean, we've got to figure out how big the problem is. So when I asked, do your officers engage in racial profiling or biased policing, some of them said, well, probably, and when we discover that, we will take action, and we do everything we can to prevent it, but we can't say 100% that it doesn't occur. So then I asked, well, do you have any data to support your answer? No, nobody has any data, even though we're collecting all this RIPA data from all these departments, millions and millions of records. The data alone will neither prove nor refute an accusation of racial bias or racial profiling. It's just not possible. You're talking about quantitative data, numbers, when you're looking at racial disparities. When we're talking about racial bias and racial profiling, we're talking about what's going on in the officer's head when they take action. There is no officer that's ever going to write a report that says, I pulled over the driver because they were black. There's always going to be a legal justification for whatever an officer does, otherwise it's obviously illegal. So what we're trying to do with the numbers is get into the officer's head, which you can't do. So there is no data to either confirm or deny the existence So there is no data to either confirm or deny the existence of racial profiling. Now, one of the challenges with any data collection program, with law enforcement data, is you have to make a lot of assumptions. And the first assumption you have to make is that when officers fill out a form saying the race or age and gender of the person they stop, they're always going to be truthful, right? If we're going to believe in the data, then we have to believe in the source of the data. And the source of the data is always the officer. Your race is not on your driver's license. There's no way, absent asking the individual, for an officer to determine independently what your race is. So every single data system that's out there that collects race data is based on the officer's perception. How do we know they're truthful? You've got an officer who is racist and knows that you're collecting data to try to identify him. What incentive does he have to be truthful when he reports the race of every person they stop? None. But you have to assume, if you're going to use the data to try to determine whether an officer or department's engaged in racial profiling, you have to assume that they're being truthful when they fill out the form. And not all officers are truthful. And also, not all officers will be accurate. When you're comparing stop data with the population data, you're comparing apples to oranges. You're comparing an officer's perception of someone's race in the stop with their self-reported race in the census data. How often does that match up? Nobody knows. Yes?
What I'm not clear about on this, isn't the incentive in the opposite direction than you're saying? If I were a biased police officer and I wanted to hide the fact that I was pulling over more black people, I would be inclined to put that they're white or some other race than black.
Correct.
But in general, black people are overrepresented in that data. So it seems like the possible mechanism we might be suspicious of would push the direction to be, that the disproportionality would be even worse if people were not being truthful. Not that it would be less bad.
Correct. But what I'm saying is, is that if an officer wanted to, if an officer was racist and was profiling on a regular basis, they could easily defeat the system. Right? But what you're saying is correct, that if we're assuming, but again, we're assuming that officers are truthful. So if they, if in fact, officers were always untruthful, and we still see these disparities, then that means that the disparities were actually much worse than the way they are.
Mm-hmm. Okay, all right. I'll let you just keep going through your list. I think I need to get the context here.
Please, please, keep going. And sometimes I might not be able to explain myself. But hopefully, my goal is by the end, hopefully, we'll be going over these things so many times that my meaning will come through. Another big problem with all of these racial disparity studies, not so much with what happens after the stop, but what happens in the decision to make a stop. So with the RIPA data, most of the data is for traffic stops. And the RIPA data, the people who analyze the RIPA data assume that the officers accurately perceive the race, age, gender, disability of the person they're stopping before they stop them. Because what they're saying is, is that any disparities in stops are due to racial bias. So what happens if the officer can't see the race of the driver when they stop them? So unfortunately, the RIPA data and most data collection programs do not ask that one basic question to officers. Were you able to perceive the person's race before you stopped them? That's a huge data gap. But there are some agencies that do that. And I've looked at their data, Pleasanton, California is one of them. So in Pleasanton, California, they fill out all the RIPA data, but they have an extra question. Were you able to perceive the race and gender? So they have racial, Pleasanton has racial disparities in the stop data with their population. 91% of the officers said that they could not perceive the race before they stopped the person. So if that's the case, then most of the disparities that are observed between stops and the population cannot be due to racial bias. Because the officer has no idea what the race of the person is before they stop them. Now, we go back to question one. How can we trust the officer to accurately say if they perceived the race? Because of course, they're always going to say they didn't perceive the race. Well, if we can't trust the officers here, then we can't trust them up there to accurately perceive their race. It's an all-or-nothing deal. Either you trust the data source or you don't. And the data source is the officer. So what the officers in Pleasanton were saying is that 91% of the time, we don't know. We don't know who we're stopping. And when we looked at, when we broke down the data by type of traffic infraction, what you find is that when officers were stopping somebody for a cellphone violation, talking on the cellphone, 60% of the time, the officer said they could perceive their race, which makes sense, right? Because if they can see them on a cellphone, they can probably see their face or the color of their skin. So, but for speeding, it was something like 5%, 5% of the time, they could see the race of the driver. People have tinted windows, all sorts of obstructions. You know, if you're 200 feet away making a traffic stop, how likely is it? Not very, according to the data from Pleasanton. But this is a key data piece that we need to know in order to understand the racial disparities. But almost no agency is collecting that information. Another assumption that you have to make, particularly if you're using population as a benchmark, is that every demographic group in your community, if we're talking about traffic stop set, every demographic group is driving the same amount every day at all times of the day, and they violate laws at the same rate, and they are equally likely coming into contact with the police. Because you're using population as a benchmark. So everyone has to use that as a benchmark. Who do you have in your population? You have senior citizens in nursing homes. You have young children in nursery school. You have everyone in your population that you're comparing with traffic stops. Why do you do, why do that? That makes no sense. If somebody can't even legally drive, or they're too young to drive, or they're disabled and they're, then they should be taken out of that population benchmark, right? Because they're at zero risk of being stopped by the police. But they're always, if you use a population benchmark, you have to assume that everyone in your community drives at the same rate and is equally likely to be stopped. If that was true, then racial disparities would be a strong indicator of racial bias by police. Because everyone's got the same chance of being stopped. And so why is it that we have racial disparities? But it's not, that's not reality. Another part of this, I can't remember if it's, next one, yes?
We have a question. I'm sorry, Ben?
Thank you. I guess, well, one, I'll just say, we read the report. You've made these points several times in the report. It appears to me that your model makes the opposite assumption in changing the benchmark, that then using suspects reported as the benchmark, it's assuming that that is a valid, or like a valid indicator of who commits crimes. And I guess my question is, if you're going to use this benchmark, where 45% of suspects reported are black as the benchmark to judge arrests and use of force, are you saying that you believe that means 45% of crimes in Richfield are committed by black people?
So the first thing is, there's no perfect benchmark. All I'm saying is, is that reported crimes and reported victimization are a better benchmark than population. To get the perfect benchmark for traffic stops, and some jurisdictions have done this, they've spent millions of dollars on traffic violation surveys. So they will hire grad students to stand on a street corner and try to record the race of the driver, how many drivers are speeding, how many drivers fail to stop at a stop sign. So they're trying to get, what is the population of violators out there that are at risk of being stopped by the police? And then comparing that benchmark with who the police stopped. So that would definitely be a better benchmark for traffic stops than reported crimes, or certainly better than the population. It's still not perfect because it doesn't take into account officer deployment. And maybe you have officers focused on your downtown core, and you have more officers there. And so people that commit offenses in the downtown core are more likely to be stopped than in a single-family resident's neighborhood where there are no police around. So you have to, you have to look at not only what is the suspect doing, or the violator, but what are the officers doing and deployment. So with the benchmarks that we use, one of the important things that you said was that we don't compare use of force with reported crimes. We try to pick the best benchmark for whatever the variable is that we're measuring. So for uses of force, we use arrests as a benchmark. For arrests, we look at stops as the benchmark. For stops, we look at reported crimes as the benchmark. And I'll go through all this in more detail. But the bottom line is, there is no perfect benchmark. All I'm doing is saying, reported crimes are a better benchmark than population because of these reasons. Because reported crimes, that's what the police are using to deploy their resources. Reported crime suspects are who the police are looking for. They're being reported by the community as having committed a crime. They're not looking, police don't, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but police don't usually make random traffic stops for no reason, right? There's, they're trying, and also, they have, there's so many vehicle code violations. Probably everybody on the road could be stopped for something at some point. And an officer probably sees many offenses every day that they don't stop. And so they have to find a way to use their limited resources in the most effective way. And they're going to use the community calls for service as the driver for how you're going to deploy your resources. If you have community members saying, we've had a huge problem with drunk drivers in our neighborhood, lots of accidents, lots of problems, you want the police department to respond in an appropriate way and maybe do a DUI emphasis patrol there. And they're going to make lots of arrests and stops in that area where there's a community problem. So what the community is telling the police is going to drive what the police do. It's not a perfect, I totally agree with you. It's not a perfect benchmark, absolutely, 100%. And it's not going to tell you ultimately whether there's a problem with racial bias or racial profiling. But it's a better way than population to examine racial disparities and try to get at the underlying causes of those disparities. I don't want to say that makes sense, but I mean, I'm happy to keep going and talk about this issue if you are not satisfied.
You can keep going. I don't necessarily agree with that analysis, and you didn't, I guess, it's less relevant to this exact point. But I am interested in whether you believe, based on the data, that 45% of crimes in Richfield are committed by black people?
No, I would never say that.
Okay. Then I guess, because you identify that disparity in the reports between, but then your executive summary is very short and basically says that there are no disparities we need to worry about.
That's not what I said. So what I said was that there is no evidence in this study that we did that suggests that there is systemic bias, lots of police officers on a regular basis going out and stopping people of color for no reason. I did not say, and I would never say, that the data shows there's no problem. Or that the data shows that not a single officer in the department is ever engaged in racial profiling. There's no evidence of that. Nor would I say that this disparity here proves beyond shadow of a doubt that there's racial profiling going on. Because there's a million explanations for every disparity. And you've got to dig much deeper into the data in order to find that out. And so I would never say that, well, actually, I'll save that for a little bit. Demographics do play a role in criminal behavior. Men are more likely to commit crimes than women. Individuals between 18 and 29 are more likely to commit crimes than juveniles or senior citizens. There's absolutely zero evidence to show that the color of your skin determines your criminal behavior. None. I would never, ever say that. And also, I'm not saying that 45% of residents of Richfield who are, or 45% of crimes are committed by Richfield residents who are black. I would never say that. What I'm saying is, is that the reports that are coming into the police department look like this. Not every crime is reported to the police. More serious violent crimes are more likely to be reported than a minor shoplift. So there is no way to actively determine the actual crime rate. And also, who is committing the crimes? We just don't have that data. It doesn't exist anywhere in any jurisdiction. So I can, I definitely know how people can read the report to think that I'm saying there's no problem because I'm not showing the kind of disparities that people are used to seeing when you look at population data. But I'm absolutely in no way, shape, or form saying that there's no problem and that everything's great and there's nothing you have to worry about. My goal is to say, here, and I'm going to give some concrete examples about how you can use data like this to actually reduce racial disparities. If this is a concern for your community and for your elected officials in your department, there are things that you can do to reduce racial disparities. But telling the police to stop racial profiling when there's no evidence that that is what's driving these disparities is not going to make any difference. And that's sort of my mantra, is, yes, there are disparities. If you want to do something about it, let's look at the underlying causes and do something about it. And also, when the chief finds an officer, if there's evidence that an officer is engaged in misconduct and biased policing or racial profiling, you would expect your chief to take disciplinary action against that officer. And if that's happening, that's great. But that's not, that's not the data that I'm looking at, right? But that's how you address, not with the data, but that's how you address misconduct by police officers is through your command staff and your chief and your disciplinary process.
We have a couple other questions. Mary hasn't asked a question yet, so I'll pass it to her, and then I will pass it to Sean.
So you were saying there are things we can do to decrease the disparities. And if you're going to do this later in the presentation, I'll just wait for that. But is it beyond just collecting data? Because I read part of your thing that said the recommendations are all about collecting data. Are you going to get down into other types of solutions or things that you would suggest?
Yeah, that's a great question. Because, yes, you're correct. The recommendations in the report are about how you can improve your data collection to get better information to make better decisions. I'm not coming in, you know, there's some consultants, and if you do an audit, you know, get an audit of the department or something like that, there are consultants that'll come in and say, you should do it this way, you should do it that way. This is the way to fix this problem. You know, my goal in writing this report is not to tell you what you should do or tell you what you think, what should be important. My goal is to give you the data to make your own decisions about where you want. If you want the data to change in a certain way, I can give you suggestions on where to focus. And again, I'll show you a specific example we did in Seattle on driving while license suspended, which had huge racial disparities. And so once we identified that those racial disparities were coming from this particular crime, then we started analyzing, well, why is it? Why is it that, and what can we do to change that? And we implemented a successful program that dramatically reduced racial disparities. So I don't know, I don't know your city, I don't know your community, I don't know all the ins and outs of Richfield. That's for you all. I'm simply here to give you data and information and the tools that you can use to make data-driven decisions.
Sean?
I had kind of a narrower question related to Ben's question. I'm just, what does reported crime mean? Or like, does that, does it just mean like a civilian calls in and says, my boyfriend assaulted me and so-and-so, he's this racist, this age? Or does that also include things that, like, if the police are going and they observe a fight? Is that a reported crime?
I believe it is for NIBERS, isn't it, chief?
Yeah, for NIBERS, which is the National Incident Reporting Base System, that is a call for service. That will be put into the CAD comments, and then we're dispatched out to that. Obviously, if it's an incident report, that's the Obviously, if it's an incident report, that's the action the officer takes to write the report if someone's been assaulted, or someone needs to be arrested, or things like that, and that has to be reported. So, there's a combination of what's in CAD, which is computer-aided dispatch, and then what's in the incident report.
Okay.
So, the bulk of -- sorry, Chief, just to clarify about NiBRS. So, the National Incident-Based Reporting System is the new FBI system that does the replacement for the uniform crime reports. Basically, this is how the FBI collects crime data from every agency in the country. It's having some problems because agencies are having difficulty with the transition. And so, but, the great thing is, is that NiBRS is so far superior to the old system because NiBRS has demographic information on crime victims and reported crime suspects that we did not have before. Before, what we had was just reported crimes. You know, how many robberies, how many taking motor vehicles, that kind of thing. Now, we actually have demographics. It's not complete data, because obviously, a lot of reports won't have that demographic information. But, most of the demographics on -- well, all the demographics usually on victims will come from the victim or witnesses, and then most of the demographics for reported crime suspects are coming from the victims. If an officer were to observe criminal behavior and have probable cause to make an arrest, and they knew the age, race, and gender of the suspect, whether or not they made an arrest, that would also be reported to NiBRS. But, the bulk of NiBRS is coming from reports from the community.
Okay. And then, I'm just wondering about traffic stops as well. Is there a reported crime that exists that we would be comparing to? Like, is?
No, NiBRS is similar to Part I Crimes. So, we're talking about, you know, violent crimes, property crimes. So, if you have local ordinances or, you know, specifically traffic, that would not be included in NiBRS.
Okay. But, I guess I'm wondering, in your report, if we see that certain races are more likely to be pulled over by the police and we're comparing it to reported crimes, how can we compare that if we're not reporting -- if there is no reporting of traffic crimes?
Right. That goes back to my -- there's no perfect benchmark. So, you need to compare it to something if you're going to look at racial disparities. So, what I'm saying is that reported criminal behavior, also, we also have computer-aided dispatch data and RMS data from Richfield PD that was also included in the analysis that has more detail, particularly from the CAD calls on reported crime suspects. But, again, you're not going to find a good, a perfect benchmark. So, what my argument is, is that because reported crimes, and it could also not be reported for the CAD data, it could just be a suspicious circumstance, right? And also, there may be a large proportion whether age, race, and gender are not known of the person. So, there are a lot of different limitations to any benchmark that enables a meaningful analysis of the disparities. And that's why most of my recommendations are about how we can improve the data collection to come up with better benchmarks and better analyses.
Well, I appreciate that, and especially with violent crimes or other things, it makes more sense how this is limited, but you make an argument for why it's closer. But, with traffic stops, it's like you have the denominator and not the numerator at all. I don't understand how you can compare, why that would even come in if that data doesn't exist as to the race.
I totally agree with -- I mean, that's what I was saying about the traffic stop studies. In order to get a good benchmark for traffic stops, you would have to do a multimillion-dollar study to find out who's on the road and who's violating crimes at any given rate. All I'm saying is that reported crimes are -- when you're looking at stops, any kind of police stop, who are the police looking for? Also, a lot of traffic stops may be investigatory stops. There may be, you know, also known as pretext stops. And so, there may be a violation, a traffic violation, but the officer may be investigating a homicide, and they don't have probable cause or reasonable suspicion to stop the suspect for homicide. But, they see a taillight out, they're investigating a homicide, they think that this might be the suspect, so they stop them for the taillight out, and then see, once they get their ID, if they are the suspect that they're looking for. So, those happen, you know, quite frequently as well. So, those are another reason why you'd want reported crimes as a better benchmark than your just general population.
Okay.
Yes?
Ben, go ahead. Oh, oh.
No, and I can just --
Go ahead, Chief.
I can dovetail on what Bob's saying. Some traffic stops do have incident reports, and that's where it gets a little gray, because if it's a DWI or some other traffic incident in the state of Minnesota that we have to document, it will have an incident report. But, like Bob had said, a lot of traffic stops, there may be the probable cause there to stop the vehicle, and if there's a written warning or there's a verbal warning, that person's sent on their way, or we hand out a lights-on certificate, that's not tracked anywhere necessarily by an incident report. So, when he's talking about those benchmarks, that's where we have gaps in data on the traffic stops, because we don't necessarily track race, gender, age in those situations unless enforcement action is taken, and we have to write a report or we have to write a citation. So, that's what we're trying to, through Bob's recommendations, sort of tighten up some of the things in the new software.
Go ahead, Ben. And Simon, did you have your hand up too? So, Ben and then Simon.
I just want to circle back to and emphasize, and I appreciate you saying out loud, that there are disparities, that you are presenting a specific set of data, that your role and purpose in working with us is not to direct us on resolving those disparities. Because I think, given that this is the -- and this comment is partially to community members who are here, partially a comment to the presentation I know is going to happen tomorrow. This is the first conversation we've had about these disparities in a couple of years, and I think that the community is interested in the fuller picture. I appreciate the tone and the comments from Katie and Jay at the beginning. I think that is, that sense of, "We want to work on this. Here's what we're doing so far," is much more reflective than your report. I would not blame any community member for reading the two-page executive summary instead of the 172 pages, and it does not highlight any of the large disparities that were found, or some of the more minor ones. And you literally, for someone who did read the full report, on page 127, say, quote, "We believe this is because there is no law, policy, or training program that will significantly reduce the racial disparities observed in policing or the criminal justice system." And I think we, as a city, have decided that that's -- we're not okay with that answer. And so, I know my original question sort of interrupted the flow. I'm happy to -- others may have questions, but I'm happy to see where you're going with this, but I think it's important that, before we dig in any further, that we've established that the data you're looking into is a specific subset of a broader problem, and that regardless of your beliefs about solutions, that we, as a city, are still committed to reducing those racial disparities, knowing that they are much larger than just whether individual officers are racially profiling.
Yeah, no, a lot of things there, and I wanted to emphasize that if there's something in my report that isn't clear, or people are misreading, or not my true intent, like that quote that you read there, what I was referring to, and if it's not clear, I'll revise it. What I was referring to is there is no law or policy or anything about policing that is going to dramatically change the racial disparities. So, you can have all the anti-police bias policies you want, you can do all the implicit bias training you want, you can have body cameras, you can do de-escalation training, all that stuff for the police, it's not going to change your racial disparities. If you, on the flip side, if you see, for example, the example that I'm going to show in Seattle, if you see huge racial disparities in a certain type of crime, such as driving while license suspended, which is basically an economic crime when people don't pay their traffic tickets and they drive, then they can go to jail. You have a lot of control, as elected officials, over that, because you can repeal the law, right? That would eliminate all those racial disparities immediately. You can set up a program that we did in Seattle to mitigate the impacts of that law on poor communities, and that will reduce racial disparities. So, what I'm referring to, there's no law or policy, that's specifically looking at the police, because there is no data to show that the police are driving the racial disparities. If there was, then yeah, you'd get a new police chief and put in a new policy and say, "Stop racial profiling," and your numbers should go down. But, we don't -- there's no jurisdiction that, even jurisdictions that are under consent decrees. In Seattle, Seattle's been under consent decree for 10 years. Every possible police reform under the sun has been implemented in Seattle. Racial disparities went up. A lot. And there's a reason for that. It's because police disengaged, they stopped proactive policing, they responded mostly to violent crimes where the racial disparities were the highest, and racial disparities in overall policing data went up. No traffic stops, no sit-lie in the park after dark, those all went away, and police focus now primarily is running from 911 call to 911 call, and the racial disparities are not being driven by the police, they're being driven by people reporting crimes. So, you can actually be counterproductive, and I'll show some examples, if you say, "Well, we just want the police to stop minor traffic, to stop stopping people from minor traffic infractions." If you do that, racial disparities will increase. And that's how I think the data -- what I tried to do is to give you the data to reach the goals that you want to reach, and not have unintended consequences, which a lot of these policies now that have been implemented at the state and local level actually have so many unintended consequences, including the opposite results of what you're looking for.
Simon, go ahead.
Before I have any questions for you, I just want to say a word of thanks to our law enforcement that are here this afternoon, or this evening, and for Jay, you know, it's always uncomfortable to just say, "Hey, come in and examine us." Especially, law enforcement, any community. So, I just want to recognize that and say thank you. I did have a question for you and to give us something, kind of a comparative perspective. So, you've -- I understand, we've been using your -- the dashboard that your company produced for a number of years, and it's taken some years to get to this place because we needed to generate the data, and I just wondered relative -- because you're looking at these metrics particularly, and you do this in different cities across, throughout the country, do you find there is a problem with systemic bias within policing, or is it, do you find more often than not that there's no problem? Is this an aberrant finding in Richfield, or is this consistent with your findings throughout the country?
So, the data is very similar to what we've seen in other jurisdictions in terms of general sort of patterns in racial disparities. And, for example, every jurisdiction we've looked at has higher racial disparities for violent felonies than for nonviolent misdemeanors. And so, if you're looking at robberies, homicides, very large racial disparities. If you're looking at trespass, much lower racial disparities. So, but, and when I say racial disparities, you know, my primary --
Could I interrupt you, because I want to use the language, so we have a common language. I'm not talking about the disparities, maybe I misspoke, but I'm talking about the systemic bias that you found, that there's -- the data did not suggest any systemic bias here. Is that generally your conclusion throughout the country? Do you -- is it your general conclusion that there isn't systemic bias and that Richfield falls into the norm, or, like, it gets to kind of an a priori assumption, or the data that's been consistent throughout the country?
Yeah. And this where it gets really tricky, because I'm not saying there's no --
No, I'm not. I'm not, but however you want to phrase it, is this, are you phrasing that this result in Richfield is consistent across the country, or is this, are we doing abnormally well in this regard? Or, does the data suggest that there's a similar absence, as you find that absence throughout the country?
There's nothing remarkable in the data.
Okay.
And everyone that I've, every report that I've read and done, and many, many, many academic researchers and consultants will do the same kind of, use the same kind of methodology that we use to analyze policing data, and they basically all find the same results, which is that there are no, you know, large disparities when you control for certain, use better benchmarks. You do not see the same kind of disparities that you see with the population. And similarly, every jurisdiction, including Richfield, if you look at policing data with the population, you will see huge disparities, but only for certain racial groups, and you will see a very significant underrepresentation for other groups, such as Asians. Underrepresented in all policing data when you compare it to the population. But, when you control for and use better benchmarks, those disparities both ways get much smaller, because you're using a better benchmark to measure those disparities. So, I think the short answer is, there's nothing that stands out to me in the Richfield report, not only the studies that we have done, but all the other studies that I've read, which is why there's a lot of pushback to this kind of methodology. And people may think, "Oh, you're saying there's no problem." No, I'm not saying there's no problem. I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is that we do not see the kind of disparities we would expect to see if there was systemic bias in profiling going on.
Specifically within law enforcement. And I think that's another thing for you to continue to clarify, that you're not, and I think you have, I just want to be really clear, that systemic injustice exists outside and in-between a lot of systems. And so, when you pull any system out and you just say, "Problem, no problem, oh, it looks good," it's not to suggest that there isn't systemic harm, it's just that with the metric that this analysis uses, it's not present like we would expect it to be if the problem primarily lived inside this small government component, which I think is, I would say it's interesting, but it's almost not interesting. It's not a very interesting, because it's such, and you acknowledge that in your report too, which is, we don't have good data, we, the things that we might want answers to, this metric doesn't measure. But, to the extent we measured this thing that's not integrated, we don't see a problem, and we don't see that problem anywhere in the country, more or less. So, as long as I understand the report, I think that, I think, if I got it, I got it.
You got it. One thing you said is that this is not a very exciting report. There's nothing that really is like shocking, or, "Oh, my God, we learned something dramatically new that we never knew before," and everything else. And what you were saying is, is that, you know, what we're really talking about with this disparity report are disparities that would be caused by the police department, by systemic racism or individual bias by officers in the department. We don't see evidence of that in the data. But, if you were to look at your poverty numbers, your housing numbers, your unemployment numbers, whatever statistic you want to look at in Richfield or in Minnesota, you will find racial disparities guaranteed. And there are a lot of underlying causes for those racial disparities, and some of those causes are driving the racial disparities in the criminal justice system. So, if your goal is to reduce racial disparities in the criminal justice system, you have to find out what's causing those racial disparities. And more often than not, it's not the police that are driving those disparities, they're upstream problems that are generating criminal behavior that the police are then responding to. And so, that's why, like, always my recommendation is collect more data, right? If you really want to get at the root of this problem, this study alone is not going to get you very far. You've got to do a lot more work, and you've got to look at a lot more aspects of your community, and not only your community, but the surrounding community, because a lot of criminal behavior comes into Richfield. So, where's it coming from? You know, what's drawing people in here to commit crimes? And how do you deal with that? How do you work with surrounding jurisdictions, you know, on mental health programs and drug addiction programs and other things that are driving these numbers? But, you got it. Do we want to, it's been just over an hour. Do we want to take a break, maybe every hour?
It's the mayor's call.
I'll check in with the council. Is right now a good time for a break? We can take one. Do we want to take one later?
I have one question that's related to Simon's, if I can get through to him first.
Yep, yep. Go ahead.
So, I appreciate that. I guess I want to be clear, when you produce these reports, have you, so you say in the executive summary, what was the language, "There is no evidence to suggest that there is systemic practices of biased policing." There is no evidence to suggest that there are systemic practices of biased policing or racial profiling occurring within the racial police department. I don't have a reason to contradict that or disbelieve that. But I guess in terms of our ability to trust your expertise, have you ever produced a report that says there is evidence in the department I'm examining that there was racial profiling or systemic bias?
No, and I've never seen any evidence of any study that has not used population that has, that has come to the same, come to that conclusion.
I'm sure this wouldn't surprise you to hear, it makes it harder to trust you when it, if you always reach the conclusion that there's not a systemic problem.
Well, I'm, I'm not going to reach a conclusion that people want to see or, or expect when, when in my professional judgment and also the academic literature that's out there on this topic. I mean, I would basically be lying to you if I said anything different than what the data showed. And I'm not going to do that. So the fact that, the fact that we haven't produced the results that people are looking for doesn't mean that the methodology is illegitimate, or that, or that we have any particular bias ourselves.
Well, but when it's the same result, that's what concerns me more, I think.
Oh, let me look at it this way. What if, what if the racial disparities that you see in the population data with policing were not due to the police? Would you expect to see, you know, I mean, if, 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 let's put it this way. If, if there was systemic bias in the Richfield Police Department, I would expect the numbers to look differently.
I, and it gets into more details of the report, so I think it's maybe better for a later discussion. I, I don't know how you reached some of the conclusions you did in determining that there wasn't bias. Particularly again, related to traffic stops or your comparison of the high discretion, low discretion things. But I don't, you know, we did want to take a break and we're kind of wrapping up, so I think I'll save that for later.
I'm happy to continue the conversation. I mean, we, we can take the break whenever.
Okay. Well, again, this sort of gets back to the basic thing that we don't have race data for stops, for traffic stops. And so you're saying that low, you know, your theory, and that makes sense, saying that high discretion stops, officers have more discretion. If there were systemic bias, we would see, say, you know, more, more overrepresentation of black people with low discretion stops. It's going to be, I don't understand how you could possibly determine that they're similar when we don't know what the high discretion stops look like because we don't have the racial data for it. We don't know the race of people being pulled over unless they're arrested or there's enforcement action.
I agree with you 100%. That, that, that there is no, I, I don't have the best, I don't have the best benchmark to use. I'm doing the best I can with the data that's available. And all I'm telling you is, is that I don't see any evidence of systemic bias. And there is a lot of evidence that there are disparities throughout society that are driving, when you look at all the racial disparities, again, in, in income and poverty and wealth and all that. And I wrote an op ed on it in the Seattle Times. I mean, we've got, I mean, we know, you know, criminal, criminal justice science, you know, has determined, you know, the factors that lead to criminal behavior. And when you look at those factors, you find racial disparities in all of those factors. So this study is not going to answer all of those questions. And I'm, I'm, I'm doing the best I can with a limited data and recognizing that absolutely you were 100% correct that that's not, I don't have a better benchmark. But what I can tell you is that using this benchmark, I don't see any evidence of systemic bias. That's all, that's, that's it. I, I can't tell you if, anything more than that with, with the limited data that I have. And, and, but at the same time, what I'm trying to say in the report is that if you look at population as a benchmark and you see all these huge racial disparities, that means nothing. It really, literally means nothing. And yet, I mean, I'll, I'll even go back. I don't like doing these reports. I don't like doing these reports because you're trying, but the reason that I do these reports is because there's so much bad research out there. And the media is beating the drum that racial disparities with the population mean that the police are biased. It doesn't mean that, but that's what everybody says. And so I generally, I don't do a lot of these reports. And I generally do them for, for agencies that are already working with us on our force analysis system because they need, they need help to explain their data. And, 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 but this is not great, this is not great research, right? Because we don't have good numbers. And so doing the best I can with a bad situation, but...
Yeah, and I totally appreciate that. And I want to be very clear. The, the stuff you've mentioned of all the other factors that relate into criminal behavior, I, I agree with you that I would not expect the absolute true rate of crime to match the absolute true rate of the population. And as you mentioned, there's other demographics too, like, like gender and like age. So I, I totally appreciate that, and I appreciate why this population thing is flawed. It just feels like this is flawed in exactly the opposite way where, by your own description, it never ever shows bias or systemic bias.
I, I would agree with you that this analysis is flawed, it's just less flawed than population. I don't think it's more flawed than population. I think it's closer to where we want to be, but it's not, it's not, again, for traffic stops, we need to know who's on the road at any given time, who's committing violations. What's there, how many officers are out there? I mean, it's a really hard benchmark to get at.
So I'm still just curious, so on page 18, if the demographic disparity analysis of data from RPD had yielded results similar to the patterns found in the extreme hypothetical example, and that example showed the hypothetical city where the high discretion stops has super high things for, for black drivers or black residents. So if you'd seen that, you would, there would be substantial risk of systemic bias. However, the racial disparity results from RPD yielded quite different patterns that are contrary to what would be expected of systemic bias were present. I'm just wondering how you possibly reach that conclusion when again, we don't know what the numbers are for high discretion stops.
Well, again, that was the hypothetical, the hypothetical, hypothetical city. Basically, what, what I'm trying to say is that if you used risk-adjusted benchmarks or activity-based benchmarks to measure racial disparities, and you got the same racial disparities that you got using the population as a benchmark, then I would say that's pretty strong evidence that there's a systemic problem of bias in the department. Because there's, there's no reasonable explanation when you use better benchmarks for those extreme disparities.
Okay. So just, I think I get what you're getting at. So are you saying that because with the, say, the more serious crimes, there's this difference between the, the proportion of the, the activity-based one and the population-based one, that you would expect that same proportion to exist with traffic crimes or more minor crimes?
Well, you, you would expect, if, if there was systemic bias going on, you would expect the disparities to be at least as great, if not greater, for the high discretion stops than the low discretion stops.
And that makes sense, but again, for Richfield, we, we don't know, right?
Well, we, as you pointed out, we don't know what the traffic population is and what the violation population is.
Yep.
So, so you are absolutely correct that we don't know for sure. What, it may be possible that, that you're driving a population that's violating the law is dramatically different than your population in reported crimes. So it's certainly possible. But when you look at, at, I mean, a lot of the, a lot of the traffic behavior, again, some of it, some of it may be investigatory stops. And also a lot of people that, that are stopped and arrested are also involved in other criminal activity reported, they may have warrants and that kind of thing. So, so we're not, we're, when we're looking at the police activity from a traffic stop, there are ways that, that you can narrow it down by looking at the type of, of incident involved. And whether it was a taillight out versus a warrant, a RASK, or suspended license, or a DUI, or something like that. So that's the other problem, real big problem with the data, is there's so many different types of crimes. There's so many different types of traffic violations. And when you dig down deeper, you'll see that there's certain violations that are, that have pretty typical disparities. For example, you know, white, white drivers are generally overrepresented in DUIs compared to the population. And suspended license, as, as we saw in Seattle, tend to be overrepresented in African Americans. So, so even looking at traffic data, you really got to drill down even further and look at those specific violations that people are being stopped for to really understand the disparities.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Great, I mean, this is great. Keep, keep, keep it coming.
I just wanted to add a comment, and this is more, this is just a conversation I want to have with the council. So the, this is the work that I do. It's not in policing, and I do inequity work and strategy in healthcare. And garbage-in data, garbage-out data, like, there's a ton of garbage data. And, and I think what is being said here is this is the data we have. This is better than garbage-in, garbage-out. You know, that's the report. And the thing, and I think Ben spoke to this, is like thinking about what is our goal? What is our vision as a community? This plays a piece of that. And how do, what are the changes that we can make? There's things, there's contributing factors to inequities in community, but there's also things that we can do internally to make sure we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're not perpetuating those, those inequities. Now, I, that's regardless of the data that's being used in any area, we can always do that. I could say that in the healthcare system, the doctors that I work with aren't making people sick and, you know, but I can tell you there's inequities in, in care of our patients. And those are the things that we're working on. And part of what we do is get much better data to inform the decision. So I, I understand a lot of those concepts. And I will just say, you know, the answer is not as black and white as, well, the inequities are in the community and that's what we need to do. You know, yes, there's inequities in the community and that's what we need to work on. And we also have, within our purview of local government, there's things we can do. Part of it is getting better data. And, and part of it is using those data-driven decisions. And so I just, since we haven't had this conversation for a long time, I want us to talk about that opportunity that we have ahead of us as well in this conver, in our time together today, if that makes sense. Simon?
If we, I, if maybe this is a good break time, I can keep my comments to myself, but you all want to take a break?
Okay. Yep, go ahead, Ben.
Had a related thing that it, to me, it seems that arguing over the methodology is maybe not the most helpful. I think that it is true. There's peer-reviewed expert opinions that disagree with population-based benchmarks. I don't think this method is the universally agreed-upon expert, peer-reviewed option either. But what it seems like we have, and I think this is some of what Maria's starting to get at, is that we have one limited piece of evidence or analysis that is not definitive, but that is telling us that at least in this method, we see that yes, officers are inheriting disparities, but that from this method, we don't see them exacerbating those disparities. Which to me, rather than, I guess acknowledging all the limitations of this kind of study, it seems that one, yes, let's keep looking at other types of analysis, further data, which I know is already in motion. And then the, the other piece that I think you have explicitly said is not your role, but I, I wonder if we have time to discuss today, or certainly would hope to continue discussing, is those inherited disparities are not okay. How do we, what does it look like to address them? That if that's one thing we can agree on from this study, it seems worth having action steps that are not just collect more data for two more years before we're taking action.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Simon.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I think I just want to acknowledge a couple of things, which is, one, you know, I, I want to say really clearly that what I and what I assume my colleagues, we're not, we're not looking for bad news in the data. And I don't walk around Richfield thinking, oh, those, those officers, I, I think you have ill will towards any, any particular community that's, I've never, I've not observed that from you. And I just want to say, I appreciate that. I do want to say that, you know, anecdotes are not the same thing as data. But lived experiences of people in Richfield are the things that we traffic in and we experience all the time. And there is a really big gap between the lived experience of people in Richfield and our law enforcement. And, you know, my, my hope for not just this, but this kind of project, the work that we're doing right here, is that we continue to, to build bridges. And we, we, and not just bridges between people, but between the lived experiences of multiple parts of our government and our community, which include law enforcement, includes every other part of our, of our community. And as, from, from one attorney to another attorney, the executive summary reads like, a little bit like a work of advocacy, that you have to kind of drill down to get to page 123, 127, to say, oh, well, here's the data. And so, so to that extent, I'm a little disappointed in the report because it leads with some advocacy where I think it could have been a better tool and perhaps still could be a tool. I think we could still use this tool to really bridge the lived experiences that we have. And I think we're getting closer to that, to the extent that people hear the two-hour conversation, we're getting closer to that. My concern is that this will be, oh, we had some questions. We ran, we ran the numbers that we run all across the country, we came to the same conclusion, which is, and I'm not, I know you're not saying that, and I just, so for everybody that's listening, we're not saying that. We're acknowledging a lot of complicated things. And I, my hope for this is that this is the beginning of an ongoing conversation, which is not to catch anybody out, not to catch any, but, but to bridge those, to bridge those gaps of experience and, and to invite more, more understanding, not less. And so I'm just sorry to be a little redundant, I just want to fight for that piece of the pie here, which I'm concerned we could, we could lose.
Well, what, just in response to that, is one thing I'm more than willing to do is, I mean, this, this report is where we sit, you know, the police department. So if there's something in the report that you would like highlighted, or if there's something in the report that, that, you know, you don't find useful or needs more clarification, I'm happy to rewrite the executive summary. I mean, I mean, and to include the things that, that elected officials, like, these are the, these are the parts of the, because you're right, I mean, who's going to read 172 pages? And so I'm happy to say, look, if you identify the areas of the report that you would like highlighted in an executive summary or whatever summary of the report, I'm happy to do that. Because again, I want it to be useful for you. So, so just, you can let me know, I'm sure, you know, we certainly can, can add that, add to a report, whether it's in the, in this report or maybe a separate summary report, whatever, whatever you like. Also, I wanted to point out that we do both, right? We use both methodologies in the report. We're not trying to hide the ball. We're not trying to say, oh, yeah, I mean, I make an argument, right, in the report, why, why we think this methodology is better. But one of the things I wanted to, to provide in all my reports is, you know, people are used to seeing, having data analyzed this way with population, they're used to seeing these numbers. So those are in there, right? There, there's no trying to hide the ball. And, but I do explain why I think that this is a better methodology. But it's really up for, for you all to determine what you want to get out of this and how this report can be used.
Okay, I think we will take a break, council. Five minutes, five minutes, okay? Is that too short? Okay, 28. All right, so it's 5:28 right now. We will see you in five minutes.
If it turns into an arrest, that's the only time we have. Yeah, that's the only time we would have to have.
Absolutely. It's not, it's not perfect. It's not like that's what I mean when you get to the stage, it's like a half a week.
It's pointing out, it's like, you wanna look further, why is it, why is it the way that it's the problem?
Right, so I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
So I do think.
For sure.
I mean, I know.
This is so good.
Just.
It's not perfect.
It's not perfect.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
So I do think.
I will do that.
For sure.
I mean, I know.
No, no, it's.
This is so good.
And it is very.
Just.
Especially.
I mean, see, earlier this.
Well, it's just separate.
We're archiving it, but it's, but we have to start fresh because of the problem.
I got the data.
We gotta get better chance based on.
That's okay.
I was just curious.
No.
I have a couple.
It's kind of a weird thing.
And then just like, I think what Sean's getting.
I'm wondering.
It's like a whole thing.
Right.
Exactly.
And that's what, that's what I.
So there are multiple things.
I'll say she's a liar.
Like what's the comment, right? There's the labor advisory council.
Otherwise, we don't.
And then.
But that's where, that's where now in the prime, that's the beginning of the presence and this year, just kind of building up.
Oh, cool.
The infrastructure. So I think like in the next three months, we're gonna have a bunch of.
That's good, because I know.
And that's what California is gonna, is a housing.
But I did find just.
Well, that's what.
Well, that's.
It's a lot.
Well, well, yeah.
It's a lot.
Well, yeah.
Maybe I should have corrected that.
Well, the thing, the thing is that the point I'm gonna talk about in Seattle, you could, you don't have to change the law in order to change the house.
Okay.
Yeah, it's basically this impact program. So you, instead of being arrested for a purpose, this time driver putting him in jail, you can.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's dramatic, but I mean, you gotta do other things as well.
Right.
It's, it changed everything.
Yeah.
Wait.
Well, we have some military.
Yeah.
He's got a muscle.
Oh, he would raise.
He's got a muscle.
Yeah.
He's got a muscle.
But you like it.
That's.
I'm a leg in on him.
I do want to say.
Do you want to say?
Before it's.
I just do.
It's really great.
No.
It starts it.
I would solve so many questions.
The only thing I would.
I'll turn you.
Yes.
It's really.
So.
Oh, cool.
Could be problematic. It's not usually done that. So, I just wanna, maybe I should have corrected that.
Well, the thing, the thing is that the point I'm gonna talk about in Seattle, you could, you don't have to change the law in order to change the house.
Okay.
Yeah, it's basically this impact program. So you, instead of being arrested for a purpose, this time driver putting him in jail, you can.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's dramatic, but I mean, you gotta do other things as well.
Right.
It's, it changed everything.
Yeah.
Wait.
Well, we have some military.
Yeah.
He's got a muscle.
Oh, he would raise.
He's got a muscle.
Yeah.
He's got a muscle.
But you like it.
That's.
I'm a leg in on him.
I do want to say.
Do you want to say?
Before it's.
I just do.
It's really great thing is that they're engaged. So that's, that's.
I have to say, I personally, like, this is, it's a very odd conversation.
It's just like.
Talk this direction.
But with the literal, yes, literally, like, there's so much grass behind me that
like went, like, comes into my eyes.
Oh, that's.
That's right.
There's just nothing, I mean.
I'm like, what, what is that? My, oh, no, that's literally all the grass.
Something.
That's quite a row, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Right.
Then it's like, okay, well, we're gonna start new services or or getting people going to the jails and, you know, have treatment.
And that's what, and maybe I can talk about.
Are there any tie in your uniform or is that like?
I can talk about.
Either wear a tie or.
Oh, okay.
It's.
It looks very snappy, especially with the tie bar on.
This is our formal car.
Tires.
Yeah.
I've heard.
What, what, why?
Kelly should get bonus points for the spray she uses.
What's that?
Kelly should get bonus points for the spray she uses.
It's, it's really hard to do like on the air.
Yes.
Only some departments.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I've looked in other departments and everything else. I mean, it has to be done.
Yeah.
Don't worry.
I mean, go on, it is.
That's a, that's a problem.
I agree.
That's a problem.
We'll be with, I mean, we're dispatched by.
It's one of my favorites. It's a simultaneously when I'm at daycare and I'm at school.
Yeah.
I love doing time in all these other areas.
Yeah, tomorrow night, we were gonna bring.
Oh, yeah.
You can't.
Yeah.
I'm like, come on, different, I'm like yanking on this one.
I know, I know.
There's actually a button.
I really would like.
Fred Sack, how can I?
Well, she's.
She gives to her sometimes.
Yeah.
Like their.
For some.
Yeah.
I'm.
I got the data.
So.
We gotta get better chance based on.
That's okay.
Probably anyway.
I was just curious.
What is.
I'm.
I have a couple.
It's kind of a weird thing.
And then.
I'm wondering.
It's like a whole thing.
Right.
Exactly.
So there is.
And that's what, that's what I.
So.
So there are multiple things.
I'll say I can catch.
Like what's the comment, right? There's the labor advisory council.
Otherwise, we don't.
Say, hey, I'm ready.
And then.
It's what we're doing.
Okay.
And so now.
But that's where, that's where now in the prime, that's the beginning of the presence and this year, just kind of building up. Oh, cool.
The infrastructure. So I think like in the next three months, we're gonna have a bunch of.
That's good, because I know.
And that's what California is gonna, is a housing.
But I did find just.
Well, that's what.
Well, that's.
It's a lot.
Well, yeah.
There's.
Yeah, so there are limits and I.
If anybody wants to come.
The only.
Everybody.
Not so you see it.
Yep.
Just so it's self-reported and it's.
It starts it.
I would solve so many questions.
The only thing I would.
I'll turn you.
Yes.
It's really.
So.
Oh, cool.
Could be problematic. It's not usually done that. So, I just wanna, maybe I should have corrected that.
Well, the thing, the thing is that the point I'm gonna talk about in Seattle, you could, you don't have to change the law in order to change the house.
Okay.
Yeah, it's basically this impact program. So you, instead of being arrested for a purpose, this time driver putting him in jail, you can.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's dramatic, but I mean, you gotta do other things as well.
Right.
It's, it changed everything.
Yeah.
Wait.
It's like.
Oh, he would raise.
Oh, that's.
Yeah.
That's.
But you like it.
That's.
I'm a leg in on him.
I do want to say.
Do you want to say?
Before it's.
I just do.
It's.
No.
It's.
I have to say, I personally, like, this is, it's a very odd conversation.
It's just like.
Talk this direction.
But with the literal, yes, literally, like, there's so much grass behind me that like went, like, comes into my eyes.
Oh, that's.
That's right.
There's just nothing, I mean.
I'm like, what, what is that? My, oh, no, that's literally all the grass.
Something.
Some.
That's quite a row, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Right.
Then it's like, okay, well, we're gonna start new services or or getting people going to the jails and, you know, have treatment.
And that's what, and maybe I can talk about.
Are there any tie in your uniform or is that like?
I can talk about.
Either wear a tie or.
Oh, okay.
It's.
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 It's really hard to do like on the air.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you know, I've looked in other departments and everything else. I mean, it has to be done.
Yeah.
Don't worry.
I mean, go on, it is.
That's a, that's a problem.
I agree.
That's a problem.
We'll be with, I mean, we're dispatched by.
It's one of my favorites. It's a simultaneously when I'm at daycare and I'm at school.
Yeah.
I love doing time in all these other areas.
Yeah, tomorrow night, we were gonna bring.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no.
You know, I'm like, come on, different, I'm like yanking on this one.
I know, I know.
There's actually a button.
I really would like.
Yeah.
Fred Sack, how can I?
She gives to her sometimes.
Yeah.
Like their.
For some.
Yeah.
I want me hold on to it.
I got it.
I can also.
Like.
She said she was.
Like from two thousand thirteen or something.
It matters.
It's hot.
Because a lot of.
I think.
I think.
With the reports, the.
I know.
I know.
It's.
In part because that is how everybody.
I know.
I honestly didn't know about it. Further, I'm surprised it's typically, a couple of potential stops are common and happen. Obviously, we've been told specifically that it doesn't happen. We don't.
Well, I don't know that you've got our data.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't know.
Okay.
I was, I have not heard that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then where are you doing it?
Yeah.
But yeah, no, I think fair and right, because we don't have that data right now.
I think that's.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I'm glad to hear that.
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, so.
It's a.
Yeah.
You may.
No, not me.
Well, no.
Oh, it wasn't me. I have no idea. But it's good to see you, Kate.
Yeah.
You?
Yeah.
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 Okay, we have all the council members back, so I think we can get started. And we have our five-minute break, so we can just get started. Looks like we have a video.
I'm just gonna, I'm, I wanna show a video, a quick video, and I gotta, I gotta shorten it down here. Um. So, um, I've, I've got a couple of videos to show you, I mean, really talking about the challenges of, not only the challenges of data collection, when you're looking at racial disparities, but how that data is typically presented in the media and even by by researchers. And and so so this first video is the the Public Policy Institute in California, which is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization. They have collected the RIPA data, the racial profiling data from California, and they have produced a series of studies. And and they had a webinar a few weeks ago, and people at the Public Policy Institute talked about how they interpreted the data. And this is just trap, this is just top, stop data, nothing, nothing special. And and it's all analyzed based on the population as a benchmark. But the ACLU was involved in the, in the analysis and the reporting. And it's important to, to, I think, to acknowledge how this data is being used. I mean, and we're not talking about any better data than I have for Richfield, right? It's, it's, in many ways, it's not as good. And so, and and then we can sort of discuss afterwards.
My general impression of the report is that it confirms across agencies, things that I've already known about individual police departments for some time, through my work with, in coalition with community organizations specifically impacted by these kinds of stops, and through my work as a litigator that works on racial profiling cases, namely that many traffic stops are pretextual, that there are gross racial disparities in who is stopped, who is searched, and how intrusive those stops and searches are. One thing in the report that I found particularly striking, though, was that something like zero point zero zero two percent of the stops that PPIC examined resulted in recovery of a contraband firearm. So that's like three zeros after the decimal point. And of course, the rates of finding contraband are even lower when we look at stops and searches of black individuals. So to me, that demonstrates how pretext stops are not only racist, but woefully inefficient when we are talking about serving public safety, especially when you consider how our continuous commitment of resources and focus to these attempts to find a needle in the haystack may be costing us opportunities to pivot to strategies that are more efficient, more solutions-oriented, and in general, work better for safety, approaches focused on addressing the root causes of problems like gun crime, for example. And the ineffectiveness of this widespread practice is even more troubling when you consider the public safety harms on the other side of the balance that result from the erosion of public trust, not only in police, but public institutions more broadly, when armed law enforcement saturate particular neighborhoods like an occupying force and repeatedly subject people to stops based on justifications everyone knows are dishonest, as well as the risk of police violence in every traffic stop. And the PPIC report does a great job documenting the hundreds of thousands of stops serving no law enforcement purpose, where people are pulled out of their cars, handcuffed, thrown into the back of squad cars, forced to sit or lie down on the sidewalk. Because we have to recognize that the physical injuries, the dignitary harms, the trauma and emotional harm, and in the worst cases, loss of life that results from policing interactions like this are threats to the well-being of our communities as well, if we're going away the public safety costs and benefits of this practice.
So all she was talking about were the racial disparities that they found in their report with the RIPA data. So she drew all those conclusions about policing, how they're an occupying force, they're eroding trust and confidence in the community, from the same kind of data that I've got. So you have advocates that are out there that are using this data to paint a very clear picture of law enforcement that, in my opinion, is eroding trust and confidence in law enforcement, where there's no data to back it up. And and that's, that's why I do these reports, is I can't, I can't, I can't make the kind of definitive conclusions one way or the other that the ACLU can. But I can guarantee you that if you gave the same data that I looked at to the ACLU, you would get the same, because you see the same disparities with the population, you would get the same statement from the ACLU about Richfield that they made about California agencies. And that's, that's where I think we have, that's where data can really be destructive. And and if it's not presented in the right way, with enough caveats, and all the caveats that you're bringing up highlight the fact that you can't say what she just said from the data. You can't draw those conclusions one way or the other. And I wanna show you one more video for highlights the problem. So there was a Harvard professor, Roland Frye, and he looked at, he's an economist, never really got into policing data before. But you'll, and you'll see the, the video of him in a moment. But he looked at data from New York City on, on stop and frisk. And what he found was that blacks were more likely than whites to have force used against them in, in pretty much every category of force. And he published a paper on this and, and received a lot of press attention for that, for that report, and, and no criticism for that report. He produced another report on lethal force in Houston. And this is not looking at population as a benchmark. He, he, he looked at a lot of different, it was a very thorough study. He looked at a lot of risk factors and a lot of factors to, to develop his benchmark. And he found that blacks were less likely than whites in Houston, twenty-four percent less likely to have lethal force used against them. A lot of people, this was also in the New York Times. A lot of people didn't like this report, because it showed underrepresentation for blacks for lethal force. So what I wanna do is to show you a podcast that he did, where he talks about these two studies.
Tried to, to take on this, this narrative that black men in particular are overpoliced, that there, there's excessive force being used. And you found, well, why don't you describe the, the arc of some of the things that you found, how that mirrors or not the dominant narrative, and whether or not actually having the accurate data has changed the narrative or not?
Absolutely, love it. Let me just back up one second, which is, when I go into a question like this, when it comes to police use of force or education or have you, I don't go, I go in with my personal, like, views normally, you know, inspired by my grandmother. But I let the data talk, and I don't care what it says.
Yep.
Okay? So, and I go into it thinking, this is going to help black folks every single time. So when people look at my work and they say, oh, but he didn't find what I wanted him to find, that, that works. The difference between me and, 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 and folks like that is that I'm willing to tell the truth. I don't care the, the personal cost. Let me be very clear about that. So I, I, I believe that, that literally the truth will set us free. And so sometimes it might be inconvenient. Like, my grandmother told me the truth all the time, too. I didn't wanna hear it sometimes. And sometimes it was wonderful to hear, but it was always the truth. And so I just wanna be clear about that before we even get into this. But, you know, my, my motivation is, I am trying to make life happier, better, fair, et cetera, for black folks. And, but I am absolutely tied to the data. Okay? I will not, I will I will not, I will not go away from police use of force. I think it was Walter Scott that got me. You know, I had seen the footage that everybody else had seen.
Yep.
And I just kind of was like, geez, wait, what are you guys?
Just remind, just remind everyone the Walter Scott.
Yeah, Walter Scott, it's amazing that we have to, but Walter Scott, in South Carolina, running across this patchy, steaming field, is gunned down by a police officer, like, shot, whatever, 10, 12 times, I don't remember the number, because he was pulled over for a broken taillight and just got out and ran. Okay? I had been roughed up by the police, many black people I know have been roughed up by the police. I didn't know what the data was going to find, but for me, it was enough, was enough. I said, we, someone has to get to the bottom of this question, right? I didn't know how, I didn't know what I was going to do, but I just knew I had to get to the bottom. And so went and talked to a colleague of mine, said, I gotta approach this, and he said, you crazy? And I said, well, let me understand it. What you're telling me is, you are more concerned about your own career than the well-being of the black folks that we can help if we actually can change police policy? And the person basically said, you betcha. Okay? So I decided to embed myself in some police departments, because I said, look, I don't like the police that much, and I don't even know where to find data, I don't know what the data look like. So through some personal connections, I did some ride-alongs in Camden and in Houston and other places, okay? And, you know, it was the best education I got, Miss O'Neill taught me to read in first grade. Man, this job is complicated, you know, and I'm not proud of how you feel when you're riding around in a police car. Because you feel like, just the way, there's the whole vibe of the job, patrol, is, everyone's just on edge. With your presence, you're on edge with their presence, and, you know, if you ride around looking for bad guys for eight hours, I'd say about hour six, even if you're a civilian, you start looking at everybody as a bad guy. It's a weird job, man. Anyway, we collected tons and tons of data. In Houston, we were able to collect data, and it was hard, and we had to get innovative, right? Because they won't give it to you. So we had to go in places like Houston and set up shop and pay a sergeant $50 an hour to watch us type in the data manually.
Wow.
So we went to great lengths to find this data, and what we did was, we had 10 cities with data on officer-involved shootings. We had Houston, where we had not only officer-involved shootings, we had other levels of force, we had all the tasers shootings, we had a very rich dataset. And then we also had two datasets, one from New York, that had 5 million observations on lower-level use of the force. And so we had, at the end, across all datasets, we had data that was, you know, used force as light, as, you know, an argument between civilian and police, all the way up to fatal shooting. Okay? And the data shocked me, I've said that before. On, I'll just give a summary, now, you dig in with your question. On lower-level uses of force, we found pretty large racial differences in lower-level uses of force, okay? So on any random stop, black people are 50% more likely to have force used on them than the white people, okay? Now, you're going to say, hey Roland, but stops differ from places. I'm with you, brother, I know all that, right? So, but as you increase the things that you can account for, when you get to the end, I can take people who got stopped on the same block at the same time of day, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, they're still 15% more likely to have force used on them. If I look at, this is the most striking to me, people who the police themselves say are compliant, right? This person didn't, they were compliant, 20% difference still in use of force by race, okay? Now, folks will come after me, how could you be so dumb to use police data, right? Listen, even the police said they were compliant, so it's, right? This is more in your, in the favor of that argument, even then, there was a racial difference, okay? Now, in the second piece, officer-involved shootings, yes, there is a racial difference when you look at population proportion, in other words, black people are 50% of the shootings, whether they're fatal, and whatever, 12% of the population, that's not a statistic that an economist would find interesting, but I've heard that said. But when you actually expect to compare apples with apples with the shootings data, you get no racial difference in shootings, okay? I'm going to pause there, because that's the first part people like.
Right.
Second part, they don't.
Well, some, some people like it.
Some people don't. I was as surprised as everyone else about the second part, but I'm going to report the data, let me tell you, let me tell you about it. I gave this paper early on at a law school. Three professors took me to the side, you know, this has never happened in my career, I've been doing this 20 years, and said, hey, I want you to publish that first part. And that second part was, it's so different, Roland, it's so different, you don't want to publish. You, you put that away for now. I said, let me ask a question, this is just us, let me ask a question. If the second part showed racial differences, would you put it in with the first part? And they said, yeah, then we put it in with the first part. I said, well, you just guaranteed, I'm going to put it in no matter what.
But your premise, the reason you started doing this research was that you had a belief, and we were having all these conversations, Hannity and Combs, blah, blah, all these people talking without data. The central ingredient needs to be data, because I believe this too, I mean, in my own work, I try to talk about data all the time in education. And yet, here you are, in a rigorous study, and the initial desire is to suppress the component of your research that conflicts with the narrative, right?
Yeah.
Why is that happening? Why is that happening? And what can we do to change it so that that data is accepted for the data that it is, for the truth that it is?
We can have, I don't know, you asked a very important question, and I don't know the answer to that, but let me just tell you what I, what I would like, for me. I will literally come to your house this evening and sit up with you and argue all night about the data. But when you question my motives because you don't like the answer, I won't talk to you for two minutes. And so I think part of the issue is, folks see data they don't like, and they impede the motives of the person, of the author of the study, rather than digging in and saying, well, you don't understand, selection bias, right? Like, that's a different argument. Okay? I think we'd have a lot more people working in this area if the first thing you thought was, oh, they're idiot economists, they don't know how to do data, that's a different question. But when you go at someone's integrity because you don't like the findings, then of course, no, I mean, students are being told all across the country, don't touch these issues. It would be so against my own identity to not keep pushing these issues, right? Like, and again, it's not like I wanted this outcome, I didn't go, ooh, it'd be great to be controversial, people say, you're controversial, I'm not controversial, I'm just following the data wherever it leads, what are you doing? And this has happened on both sides, right? Like, sometimes I have conclusions that conservatives don't like, sometimes I have conclusions that, I just, you know, I don't care about that stuff, you know, I really don't. I mean, I'm, I find it frustrating, I find it insulting, that people would change the truth because they think they're trying to help us.
Yeah.
They're just trying to help themselves, let's be clear.
So Professor Fryer is my hero, I mean, he has got such integrity, and also, he's, you know, a Harvard economist. And I don't know if you noticed what he said, that he made a reference to population data. He did not use population data in any of his studies. He made a reference to it, he said, you know, I've heard some people use population data, that's not a number we would ever be interested in. Because credible researchers do not use population data to measure racial disparities, they just help. And when you get results that do not conform with the narrative that people want to see about policing or predict of policing, you get the backlash. And so, one of the reasons I wanted to play that is because, because Richfield's in Minnesota, and I did a report in Duluth, and I'm doing a community meeting tomorrow, a town hall forum, I imagine there'll be some people that will have Googled and found reports about Duluth in my presentation there. So I wanted to let you know what happened, in case those questions come up.
So I want to do a time check, we end in an hour, is that correct, Katie?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm wondering if you can just tell us briefly what the rest of the segments of the presentation are, and then I know you want to talk about Duluth, and that's important context for us, but I also want to come back to the council, and based on those remaining segments, we can decide together where we want to focus our time.
Sure. My plan is to finish with what happened in Duluth, and then spend the last hour talking about your data.
Okay. So why don't we, why don't we do the Duluth item, and then I would like to check in with the council again briefly? Okay, thanks.
So, so we did exactly, basically exactly the same thing we did for Richfield or Duluth. And if you look at the Duluth report, you'll see it's very similar to the Richfield report, because we used exactly the same methodology, exactly the same. The only thing that was different were the data. And, and questions earlier about, well, have you seen any major differences between agencies? And you'll see very similar patterns in the data in Duluth that you see in Richfield. However, there are, I mean, even though I stated that there's no evidence of systemic discrimination, there are disparities even when you use the risk-adjusted benchmarks. So I'm not saying that there are no disparities even with, even with our analysis in Richfield, and that's what we can, we can focus on this last hour with your data. But what happened in Duluth was that there's a local group made up of a number of different organizations, the Law Enforcement Action Network, and there was a public meeting, Lean Duluth did not attend the meeting, Lean Duluth had earlier produced a report based on population benchmarks, finding huge disparities, and they were calling on the Duluth Police Department to, by the end of 2022, they wanted all policing data, the demographics of policing data, to match the population. That was, that was their charge to the department, and they used population to measure those benchmarks. So they were invited, along with other community groups, to attend the presentation that I gave, they did not attend. After the presentation, they issued a press release. And rather than going after the report, they went after me, and just as Professor Fryer was saying. And, and it was, it was very, I was very disappointed in them, because I had reached out to them, I had offered to discuss the report with them, I had offered to, if they had experts that they wanted to bring in, I offered to do a public debate, they refused to engage, and instead, released press releases about us. And so, this is the challenge. We used exactly the same methodology, peer-reviewed academic research, they made a lot of unsubstantiated claims about me and my company, and, and one of the things that they said is that there's no, there are no academic researchers out there that would accept this, which is completely false. And so, so the Cambridge Center for Evidence-Based Policing, and the, and the leading criminal justice researcher in the world, Laura Sherman, and you can go online and you can look at his webinar, he talks about risk-adjusted benchmarks, not population benchmarks. That is the academic standard worldwide for measuring racial disparities in policing. There is no credible academic researcher that uses population benchmarks, regardless of what Lean claimed. Again, they didn't attend the presentation, they refused to meet with us, and they refused to debate in public. So, so this is the kind of challenge that researchers and consultants face, when you, when you challenge the narrative, when you challenge the conventional wisdom on how to, how to look at this data. I'm going to, I'm going to skip ahead so we can get to the Richfield data. Mary, did you want to?
Yeah, so I know he's going to talk about the Richfield data. Where are folks at? I mean, I would like to have plenty of discussion amongst the council around our, our goals and how this fits into the bigger context, I think that's very important. I just want to get thoughts from others on how you would also like to spend the next last hour. Mary?
I'm fairly certain that we've all read the report carefully, so I would think that we could summarize the data pretty carefully and leave time for that discussion, because I would like to talk about where we should go from here and what the goals are.
Others? Ben?
Yeah, I will second that, I'm particularly interested, I know we already have some action steps that are planned or that are in motion, so I'd like to hear that from Chief Henthorn J. before we're done, as well as have time to discuss, for the disparities that we do see and want to address that include but go beyond the police department, what are our next steps to work on that? And particularly, have even a couple of questions, if we have time, I'd love to hear from our police leadership in what, what disparities they're observing in the community, and what solutions they see might be helpful, so that ultimately we're focused on the question of how do we make our community safer and more crime-free, and not just the question of are our officers racial profiling?
Thank you, other comments? It sounds like, okay, it sounds like I see folks nodding, so is it possible to review the Richfield data somewhat briefly, so we have plenty of time for discussion?
Absolutely. Just before we get into the data, looking at the, this was brought up earlier, about what we would expect, using these risk-adjusted benchmarks, what we would expect the data to look like? If there was systemic racism and bias against only black people in a department? Because if they're, in the absence of systemic bias, we wouldn't expect to see huge disparities in any one particular group, but we would expect to see it in the group that was, was the target of that bias. So when we look at stops compared to reported crime suspects, we would expect to see disparities for blacks being discriminated against, arrests versus stops, searches versus stops, and uses of force for arrests. And this would indicate that in every aspect of policing, right, the police are biased against black individuals, and they're not biased against other groups. And we would expect to see large disparities across the board, not just in one area. This pattern, I would say, would be strong evidence of systemic bias. Wouldn't be absolute proof, but strong evidence. This is not the pattern that we saw in the data from, from Richfield, but we did see disparities in the data from Richfield. And so, this is, this is how we compare in the report, we look at, what does the data look like with population-based benchmarks? And it actually looks pretty similar to that, that example, right, that I just gave, where for, for black individuals, compared to the population, reported offenders, arrests, and uses of force are all three times more likely than we would expect based on the population. White, Hispanic, and Asians are underrepresented, Native Americans are slightly overrepresented, but not nearly as much as black individuals. So this is, this is what, this is the kind of disparities that population benchmarks generate. But what, the analysis that we did was looking at, you can use population as a benchmark, but for reported offenders, because these are the people in the community or coming into the community, they're reporting to the police the criminal behavior that they want the police to address. And so these numbers here for reported offenders are the same as these numbers here. And so you see this big disparity for black individuals, 3.6 times more likely to be reported as a crime suspect in Richfield than their population, and Native Americans are 50% more likely than their population to be reported in criminal behavior. Now, the next step is to look at arrests, but instead of comparing arrests to the population, we compare arrests to reported offenders. And, and I'm not going to have time to talk about sex and age, but you can do the same analysis for race, for age and gender, but most studies don't do that, they'd only focus on, on race. But we need to look at the full demographics and the disparities to really understand what's happened. But for, if we just look at race, all of a sudden, the disparities go away, except for Native Americans, which are still slightly overrepresented. So what this is saying is that Native Americans are 20% more likely to be arrested than we would expect based on their percentage of reported crimes. But you see, the blacks are slightly underrepresented by 10%. So compared to reported crimes, blacks are 10% less likely to be arrested than we would expect, all things being equal. Now, when we go to use of force, we have a lot of data on use of force, because the department's been using our force analysis system, so it's far more detailed than we could do a whole deep dive into use of force. But what's interesting here is that the disparities are still much smaller, but you have an underrepresentation for Asian, 50% underrepresentation for Asian, now, these are arrestees, right? That's your, that's your benchmark, your population are arrestees, and then those who have force used against them. So, so what this is saying is, is that when Asian suspects are arrested, they're 50% less likely than we would expect to have force used against them. Now, use of force is driven by resistance. So what this is telling me, absent bias, it could be bias, it could be that officers are just, you know, basically not using force when they could against Asian individuals, but that's pretty unlikely. And more likely is that Asian suspects are less likely to resist, or flee, or threaten officers, which would result in a use of force, than individuals of other demographic groups. And see, Hispanics are slightly overrepresented, blacks slightly overrepresented, but basically, you know, anything, you know, less than 1.5 or 0.5 is, is pretty parity with, with the benchmark. So, again, we don't see that, if we were, if we expected, if we expected, if we were looking for systemic discrimination against black individuals, we would expect to see high disparities for arrests for offenders, because essentially, the police are looking for black people specifically to arrest, and ignoring other racial groups, and also for use of force, once they're arrested, the police are just, you know, beating them up more often, because of their race. And we don't see these, we don't see those kind of numbers. This is just a different graphic way of representing it, and also, we can see, the double plus dark red is just the highest disparity level, more than 50%. But what you can see is that for reported offenders, arrests, and use of force, females are always underrepresented from what we would expect, males are always overrepresented, they're most overrepresented in the use of force. They're most overrepresented in the use of force. So males are much more likely than females, arrestees, to resist, threaten, or flee than females. For blacks, again, the population, I'm sorry, back that up. That's a population benchmark. But we see with the population, it looks like there is systemic discrimination, right? That's how I would read this. If population was a good benchmark, I'd say there's strong evidence of systemic discrimination against black people in Richfield using population benchmarks. We don't see that for the real benchmarks here. And then we see disparities for 18 to 39-year-olds. And underrepresentation for juveniles, underrepresentation for those over 50. Now, we go over to the activity-based benchmarks. And again, this is the police activity, these are reported crime suspects. For arrests and offenders, basically no disparity. We do see disparity for juveniles here for use of force. So when a juvenile is arrested, they're much more likely to have force used against them than we would expect based on the proportion of arrestees. Now, that is definitely something that you would wanna take a closer look at. And from looking at your data, this is not, this is not, this is not found in every case, but I have seen it in other jurisdictions. And it's generally situations where the police don't get involved in minor, do you have school resource officers?
No.
Okay, that's why. If you have school resource officers, they're gonna be dealing with a lot of minor offenses because they're in the schools. Any sort of scuffle or anything like that, or stealing something is going to have an immediate response from the police, and they may be arrested. These low-level offenses, the juveniles are not likely to resist police. If you're not dealing with these low-level offenses in the schools, then that means that the juveniles that you're coming in contact with are probably committing some kind of violent felony or weapons offense. They may be repeat offenders. So they're much more likely to flee or resist or threaten the police than some kid in school who, you know, pokes another student.
Could you remind us for what year that is for? Because we did have school resource officers, so I'm just...
I believe this particular dataset for use of force goes back to 2018, I think?
Okay.
Yeah.
And in 2018, we did have school resource officers? Ben?
When did they stop?
This school year was the first year, correct? That, oh, two years, oh, my gosh, two years ago? Okay, two years ago.
What Bob is saying is actually right. I mean, that's when we look at our incidents that are reported, the number of juvenile incidents we've had with auto theft and things like that, whether they're serious felonies, have obviously risen over the last year and a half to two years. So we're seeing more juvenile crime like Bob's talking about on the street when it comes to violent crime.
Thank you. Ben?
I was just gonna comment. I appreciate and was going to ask for law enforcement perspective. To be fair, you from the data cannot conclude that that is because they are resisting more or more likely to flee. You gave a caveat in one case, but not the others, that it could be bias. And so I guess my question for the officers, and what I'm hearing part of an answer, and I think was in the report on the juvenile one, is that there was a report from our officers that that is generally juveniles are more likely to try and run away. I guess that's a, a minor question is just confirmation that that's the case. I guess I'm curious, from the officer's perspective, the one disparity we do still have is the reported offenders. And I'm curious, like, in your day-to-day work as the one who's getting these reports, interacting with folks, do you have a sense of any trends that drive that? Or any insight into why that is so disproportionate to the share of the population?
Based on the information from our use of force reporting, we're seeing juveniles being involved in more violent crimes, specifically weapons. And over the last two to three years, we've seen an increase in juvenile crime in those serious felonies. So when our officers come in contact with those juvenile crimes, we're seeing a lot more use of force because of that. Where necessarily, we didn't see it probably in 18 and 19. But now with the uptick of juvenile crime over the past two years and the number of weapons we've confiscated from juveniles, that's where we're having more contact with them as it relates to use of force.
I guess the other question for you or for any of our leadership, do you have any insight in, I mean, I know it's the nature of policing that 95% of your interactions are with 5% of the population, but in this particular case, do you know or have any guesses as to trends, as to why 45% of your interactions are with the 12% of our population that is black?
Well, that could be based upon the reported number of crimes where the black individual's a suspect. That would be based upon the data that we would see or number of arrests that would be there, if I'm reading that correctly.
Right, I understand the data. I guess I'm asking, outside of just reporting the data, if ultimately we want to, again, setting the blame game aside, just want to understand how would we reduce that? Do you have any sense of any trends that are driving black folks in Richfield, or I guess in Richfield, whether or not they live here, to be reported as suspects so much more often? I mean, is there, I guess eventually I'd like us to be looking at, like, are there interventions? Is it, is there a particular outside factor if that is the case? If it is poverty or mental health or not having housing resources? Or like, are there trends that you see that lead that to be so disparate before the police are even called to show up?
I think with the social worker situation, I think through mental health, that's one thing that we've changed where we don't do incident reports on anymore, we do referrals. So we see that demographic in a lot of the referrals that we do. We also see an increase in the number of contacts that we have with non-Richfield residents. Our arrests are roughly 75% non-Richfield residents, where it's about 23 or 24% Richfield residents. I think due to the current climate over the past two years with COVID, with the economy, we're seeing a lot more petty crimes where it becomes theft, it becomes simple robbery. Those are some of the things that we're seeing that's probably contributing to that demographic.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And I think certainly we've talked about various efforts to address poverty and the stresses that cause that, and that's certainly correlated with race for a variety of reasons. I guess this seems outside the scope of today, but that is a surprising fact to me that three-quarters of our arrests are non-Richfield residents. I had no idea that was so high. And I'd be curious to unpack that more in another setting. That, I guess my assumption, and I'm realizing now it was an assumption, is that the one reason why population benchmarks are problematic being, or one of them being, you interact with people from outside Richfield. I had no idea that could potentially be so high a factor. So I think that's worth exploring more. As we get into the how do we prevent crime, what does it look like to address this?
And I didn't know that figure either until we had meetings with Bob and we started to see some of the data and the reports come in, so.
So it's actually very typical. Because when you look at the dynamics of, and the geographic location, so you have shopping areas in Richfield, and you have hotspots in those shopping areas, in those commercial districts. And you're so close to Minneapolis, you major metropolitan area. You have so much traffic going through Richfield that I would not expect in any way, shape, or form the demographics of policing data to match your population for that very reason alone. And typically, what we see is the smaller, particularly the smaller the city, the greater those, so the 67% is not unusual. And I have a small city in Washington that we work with that is about 7,000 people, but they have a Costco, a Fred Meyer, a Walmart, and 90% of their use of the force are non-residents. And so you have to consider all those issues when you're looking at policy changes and other things on how to address the problem. And there's obviously not much you can do to affect, you know, the criminal behavior of people in Minneapolis that come into Richfield to commit crimes. And so it's a challenge. And you don't have walls and borders, you know, that you can sort of keep the criminal element out. And that is going to dramatically impact your data. The other thing I wanted to mention about uses of force is that we do know a lot about use of force in Richfield because we have our force analysis system. And we did, similar to what Professor Fryer did, was we're not limited to existing data sources, right? The department is extracting all the 150 data elements that we require to run our system on every single use of force incident, including the pointing of a firearm. So we can do very deep dives into the use of force data. And I can tell you that this disparity here is due to higher resistance levels, higher threat levels, and higher flight levels. Because if you don't have one or more of those factors, then it is, the force is unlawful and it's unconstitutional. You cannot use force against a compliant suspect. So if this was due to bias, then you've got a big problem in Richfield because your officers are beating up juveniles for no reason. And so, but we know from the data that that's not the case because we collect all those elements. And we can, again, do deep dives into that data. And that's a whole other presentation on use of force. But the department's been using that system for years. And again, there's not, I mean, we can see differences in how officers use force and higher risk and lower risk. But again, you don't see, you know, patterns of officers, you know, routinely and blatantly violating the law when they use force.
And we changed our use of force reporting back in 2015 after we had that incident with the one officer that was terminated. So we changed our protocols on how we report force, how we collect it, how it's reviewed, how it's documented. And then obviously, as Bob's talking about, the database that we use with police strategy. So that all gives us early warning signs as we look at that data. If there's gonna be any problems based upon the extreme data sets that are in that use of force program are, I mean, very telltelling as far as how we look at training, how our instructors look at officers' reports, how the command staff looks at reports. All that's based upon his program and how we see it as it's implemented out on the street.
Yeah, if we're not reliant on, I mean, and this is what Professor Fryer did to reach his results. He went in and extracted data from police reports. It's a very labor-intensive process. That's what the department is doing to give us data on their use of force incidents. And so we can learn things that other agencies just don't have the capability of. And that system is specifically designed to help the chief and his staff, you know, identify issues and problems in their policies and training of potential individual officers. And they've been using that for several years. That's very different than this racial disparity study where we're making a lot of guesses and making a lot of assumptions. And I can't be definitive in pretty much anything I'm saying. But I do wanna point out some of the NiBRA's data. I skipped over the fact that, I mean, they're in the report, obviously, our data, not just from Richfield, but from other law enforcement agencies in Minnesota. So you can start to see the similarities in how the data looks. And there's a lot of similarities, not only within cities within Minnesota, but also between, with other states as well.
We do have a question before you jump into that, Mary.
I wanted to follow up on the use of force because one of your recommendations was that we should keep track of when force was permitted but not used. Is that something that you think, Jay, that would be helpful?
That's what, sorry. That's what we're talking about, to track that on our use of force report about when it could possibly be used but wasn't by the officer. So that would give us another data analytic to look at.
And as far as I know, no agency in the country is collecting that data. And the reason it's so important is you need to know, like, all we have data on are uses of force. We don't have any data on, it's called counterfactual data. We don't have any data on how many times was force authorized but not used. And so there's no way to determine how effective crisis intervention or de-escalation training is because we have no idea how many times it's affected. So if you collected data, it could just be a checkbox. You know, in this case, force was authorized. I could have lawfully used force, but I didn't. And then you would be able to see, wow, these are officers that seem to be de-escalating very well. They could have used force, but they didn't. But that data doesn't exist anywhere.
I'm wondering if we can work on wrapping up some of the data presentation. And the data on Richfield is extremely important, but I will just tell you, we have not had the opportunity to have these types of conversations, and we've wanted them for a very long time, and that is very important to us. So like Mary said, we have read the report. But I know what is important to this council is to be in conversation with our police, with our community, where we can get past the polarization and the othering that doesn't help anybody and really dig into the complexities and how we can address the complexities within our power and purview. So I wanna make sure that we have time for that because we just don't ever have enough time for those kind of conversations. And then that continues to perpetuate this polarization that we see all over the country, in this issue and in all different issues. But is there any other?
I'm happy to, I think it would be great to reserve the remainder of time for discussion. And so, as you said, everybody has a copy of the report. And I just wanted to reiterate that if you ever have any questions about the report and also any suggestions. So it'd be great, I can, if other effective someone, if a doctor or doctorate are in there, highlighting what you would like to have highlighted. I'm happy to do that. So thank you very much for your time. And like I said, I'm always here for questions and answers.
Thank you for your presentation. We really appreciate it. I'm wondering if, do we want to review the section of the suggestions, the recommendations around data collection? Or where is counsel feeling like you'd like to spend the last 30 minutes?
I guess at least briefly, I'd like to know what the chief's opinion is of the recommendations and if he's in agreement with them.
Okay. Yep, sounds, everyone's, go ahead, Simon.
And I just had a question more for Bob just before we got to Jay's recommendations. But, and I think you started to touch on it just a little bit, you know, exploring the counterfactuals. I know, I think that's great. I think a part, and this might be slightly frictional, but one of my concerns with the dataset is rather than research, it's more a demonstration. And demonstrations are powerful. That's a potentially useful tool. But if we're using a dashboard basically to run a demonstration that we run all over the country and then write a report that says, also, the things that we can't get it, we can't get it, and we don't have data for, makes me say, well, why, we don't need to pay for a dashboard to run a demonstration, demonstration made. I'm much more curious about what we can do with data that is, like you said, this is a boring report. That is interesting, that is not just, you know, we could, we already had the data. We didn't actually need that data to reach the conclusions that you shared with us. So if you had, you talked a little bit about the counterfactuals, but if you had a thought, either maybe I'm understanding that unfairly and I just wanted to give you a chance to reflect on that, or this is, if we were looking forward, this is really great data that we could be getting at.
Yeah, I mean, you're absolutely right. I mean, data collection and analysis and reporting is very time-consuming, very expensive. And the California agencies are spending tens of millions of dollars to comply with the state riposte laws. And in many ways, the value that you get out of all that effort and all that money may not be worth it. I mean, it's really up to the policymakers to decide if this is worth it or not. And... And so I don't know if I can answer the question. Is it worth, or was there something specific that you?
And maybe it's not for you. Maybe that's an in-house conversation. And I guess one of my concerns is that, you know, we, this is, there's two paths that I see that we could take out of this conversation. One is, we ran the demonstration. I think we're done, you know. And I don't hear, I don't hear any of us saying that. But I think coming into this meeting, that was a concern that I have, which is, you know, mission accomplished banner, we're good, we ran the study. Rather than saying, this is, these disparities are, and if, for my two cents, what that report could, what this executive summary could say would be something to the extent, and you hint at it, but these disparities are real, they're profound, and the tools that we have can only get at some of it, but there's good news. And I appreciate concluding on that good news. But I just, I hope that we have an opportunity that we don't have to figure out in the next thirty minutes about what data could be helpful. And if that is not helpful, that we don't, that we would put our resources towards things that will really add value to our ongoing conversation.
One thing, I think the best way to sort of maybe answer your question is if the city were to tell me what they want to know, like, what is most interest to you? And then I could say, well, here's the best way to go about collecting this data. I mean, for example, a perfect example is de-escalation training. If you're putting all your officers through de-escalation training and you're spending a lot of money on it, it would probably be good to know, is this effective or not? Is this a good use of our money and our time? Then I can tell you, here's the kind of data you would need to do that. But like you said, I mean, if I'm just presenting information that either you already know or really isn't of much value, then obviously you wouldn't want to continue doing more reports like this just to get more data and more reports and demonstrations and dashboards and so forth.
Go ahead, Sean.
I did just want to say, I've heard a lot of concerns about various things about the report. We've had a good conversation. I'm a little bit concerned about recommending any changes to the report or the executive summary just because there are such fundamental questions about the methodology and how appropriate this answer questions. And I worry that by us recommending changes or different things to cover, we're making it the City of Richfield's report and not the report by one expert in the field and his opinion of it. I would very much like it confined to, this is what one expert did in his analysis and not, this is the city's report, because I don't quite feel that this represents us. And I'm not convinced that this is representative of us.
Ben, and then I would like to pass it to Chief to answer the initial question that was asked.
Yeah, and I would, I'm comfortable with what Sean said. And I just wanted to respond a little bit to what Simon said. And I think we'll hear in a second what some of the plans that are already in place are. Maybe I misheard you, but I don't think, I think there's a, I think we want to make sure to be acting and not just collecting more data. And obviously, once we get into the specifics of like, how much it costs to collect the data we're already collecting or adding more, that's a valid question. But I do think, as with, I mean, we talked about in all of our strategic priorities, the need to be measuring it, to have dashboards, to understand if we're making progress. And whether or not we agree with either the population-based benchmark or this activity-based one, if we run both of them again in three years, that will give us some measure of whether or not we're making progress. And so I do think that data analysis is worth it.
Jay, that's so hard for me to say. I'll pass it over to you.
Thanks, Maria. I mean, based on the report, we've looked at a lot of these recommendations. Some we're already putting into place because we're moving to TRITech in March of two thousand and twenty-three. And we've worked with Edina on collecting some of this data and some of the data recommendations, such as vehicle searches, such as race, gender. We're not going to allow the officers, as Bob talked about, to put unknown because we obviously want to get the most accurate data that we can. We're going to try to come up with a way, I guess, best practice to ask for the individual's race and try to take the guesswork out of it because obviously then there's the inconsistencies that Bob talked about that we don't want in our data, which is what we have now. So we're going to be doing that. We'll probably look at getting rid of oral warnings or verbal warnings, what we call for traffic stops, and go unwritten so that we have that documentation and we can continue to collect that data. We'll also be looking at, obviously, our use of force, which we just talked about, and being able to document when force could have been used but was not so that we have that demographic included in our use of force review process. We've done police contact surveys in the past, and they've always came back very good. Obviously, we just did focus groups for strategic planning. We're looking at dashboards for NiBRS, which is the National Incident-Based Reporting System, so that people can see what types of calls we go on and things like that. We are looking at, and again, to mention, Ben, your comment about cost. A lot of these changes do cost a lot of money. And we're doing it under some contract obligations with Tyler, but some I'm having to dig for money or write grants, as I did for the disparity analysis. So there are costs. You know, we're looking at a program to possibly give out cards to drivers after traffic stops where they can immediately evaluate the officer. They came out to get a demo, very expensive program, very expensive program. Gives great data, and it gives us the opportunity to correct any behavior immediately based upon the data, but it's, again, extremely expensive. So we're looking at some of those things. We're also, you know, working with our partners in the communities, surrounding communities, to look at, you know, additional data or additional things that we can do together. Obviously, everybody's looking at this from a racial equity standpoint and how we basically collect our data and then use it and work together to obviously lower that. So, you know, we're looking at those things. But again, we're evaluating the cost. But more importantly, there's a component here when we do these things that a lot of people don't think about, and that's staff. We are not a big police department. We're forty-six officers, and I don't have a lot of support staff. So when we do these changes, I have to think about what the impact is on my staff. I know how much my staff put into doing this disparity analysis. And while the cost to pay for it was low, the cost for staff to do it and take away from other projects that we had to do while we were going through several audits was tens of thousands of dollars in staff costs. So we have to take a look at those things as we start to put in some of these recommendations. And so that's what we're looking at at this point right now. Again, that's a pretty full load for us based upon our staffing. And so, you know, we're working with different people in different contracts, with Tyler and other things, to determine, you know, what we can implement right now, what might take a year, and then obviously go from there. So I don't know if my staff has anything else to add to that. They're all quiet, but, nothing? Okay, thank you. So that's where we're at at this point.
Mary?
Oh, yep, go ahead, Katie.
Also, I'm glad you did bring up the budget associated with all of this. I would ask that counsel consider that when they're considering the entire budget. Just because the news has been, we're getting increased labor costs, you know, everything, equipment costs, et cetera. So it has been, it has been tough lately. We've got the additional costs with the upgrade for the financial software as well. And so, I mean, of course, we're going to look at it, prioritize it. But I just, I'm cautious about making it in mid-year before we can look at it in context with everything else.
Sean, do you have a question?
Yeah, sorry, what were you, like, any of these changes? Or what were you referring to, implementing mid-year versus later?
Chief had talked about the postcard.
Oh, got it, okay.
It being a very expensive change, so something that's significant cost. I just, I don't want to make it mid-year.
Yeah, that makes sense. I was just curious, so just to be clear, that collecting demographic data for traffic stops that don't result in an enforcement action, is that like a guess that's definitely happening in six-month thing? Or is that like still to be determined?
I would have to, Joe, that's going to start in March, right?
When we go live with Tyler, yeah.
Yep, March of two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, so that's what it's tied to, is that technology change? The one other specific one I was curious about was the recommendation for the consent search questions. Did you agree with that recommendation, or is that something you want to pursue?
We don't really do consent searches in Minnesota.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's not something that we really do. You know, just because of the legalities of it and the risk associated to the city. So our staff's not really trained to ask, can I have consent to search your vehicle? There has to be that reasonable articulable suspicion that we've all talked about for a long time, to be able to search that vehicle. We don't get into consent searches. We haven't done probably consent searches for, I don't know, ten years, fifteen years, something like that, so.
Okay, thanks.
Ben?
One other, thank you. I had that question too about whether the data change included more on traffic stops. Would it, I think there was also, or one of the biggest questions I had that Sean had asked earlier is already, how much of the, that column of reported offenders, like, what are the different sources of that? Do we, either already or in the new Tyler system, will we have more specific data about, like, this was initiated because of a call from a resident? This was initiated because I saw something while driving on patrol? Or this, like, it seems like our biggest disparity is in that input. And so better understanding that seems helpful. How much do we already have and how much will we be gaining?
Right now, we have, obviously, just if they're dispatched, we collect that in CAD. If they go out and write a report, they'll have that. So most of it we have now. One thing we don't do now that we're looking at is for officers to self-initiate activity. Normally, they call it through dispatch, so we get a CAD record. But, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a template there to show self-initiated activity that they can then call themselves out and document everything through that?
Yes, yeah, but they'll be limited on what type of calls they can put themselves on.
Okay.
So it'll be traffic stops and person stops. There's a couple others, but very limited.
Okay, so it'll be a little bit more robust probably than we have right now? Joe?
Yes.
Okay. Joe's our Tyler contact, so I don't have all the answers to that.
Thank you. Simon?
Thanks. I just, there are a couple of things I just wanted to recognize for folks that may be listening. And they've just been touched on a little bit. But one is just that, Jay, I know you and your staff have been exploring and constantly are exploring how, like any institution, it can be improved in use of force. And the changes you've made, you know, seven years ago and are continuing to look at are just examples of that. Also, that we have our public health is also part of public safety. And so as we're looking at multiple systems and how those systems interplay, and that's what some of the data are showing too, that we have, and you have multiple departments within public safety that can address that. And you're making investments in things like social workers that maybe span some of those departments, which I think are just worth noting as we continue to have these conversations that that's, it's not, we're waiting for this, and then we're going to do a thing or not do a thing, but that this is one in part of a continuing conversation and continuing analysis and continuing vision to make, you know, our city safer, public health-wise, public safety-wise. And then with that too, I just wanted to, and maybe this is probably my final comment, that in addition to, you know, the racial component of police community dynamics, that data is great for lots of things. We've just kind of touched on the surface for that tonight, but that there are, I would trust a lot of benefits to looking at data as community changes, as crime, you know, is certain kinds of crime accelerate, you know, whether that's violent crimes among youth or theft or, but being aware. And I know, I'm not saying anything you don't know, but just as a part of the, I just want to share my appreciation for data outside of, you know, this narrow, more narrow, critical but narrow conversation.
Other comments? Oh, Mary, do you have one?
Yeah.
And then Ben.
I had, well, I'm still thinking back to when you were saying about the seventy-five percent of the contacts are people that are outside of Richfield because one of the questions I was coming in with is what can we do here in our community to make changes or to lead to positive and more safe environments? And I was thinking of things like making sure we get rid of housing disparities and working on public health and that kind of stuff. So if a number of, if the majority of the contacts are people outside of Richfield, I still think we need to do things within our community to make it better. But can you talk about how that works together?
Yeah, I think that's a good question, Mary. I think that's where we work with our neighbors and take a look at what they're seeing as well, and then work together to sort of combat some of those issues that we're seeing, whether it's, you know, and I'm just talking about maybe some crimes like auto theft or carjacking or things like that, or some of the crimes where based upon our data, we're seeing that could be going and overflowing into Edina or Bloomington or some of the other communities, St. Louis Park. So we work together as chiefs to take a look at that, to determine, okay, what are we seeing? And so I think that would help us probably lower some of those disparities from the outside in. And then, as what Simon said, we're doing a lot of things within public safety to work with a lot of the community groups and through public health on, you know, safety and reporting crimes and things like that so that we do get more accurate data from the community coming back.
Ben?
Couple, couple things. Again, if these are major sort of new endeavor, they can wait. But two other data pieces, I'd be curious. One, I know something that has been looked at in other areas in terms of determining racial bias is arrests compared to convictions. I don't know if we have easy data on that, but that's something that if that proves that, this is going to be more shorthand than it deserves. But if it, if it shows that enough arrests are deemed valid, that they're sustained, I know that's not the only thing that leads to convictions, but that there is a narrative out there of, and certainly anecdotal stories, of black folks being arrested more that on charges that don't stick because they're not valid. And if our data can disprove that, that would be great. I would love to have that data and be able to brag about it. And then the other one, again, maybe to trying to measure things that don't happen. I know we're still fairly new with our social worker, soon to be multiple. But if we can, any amount of data, even if it's just, I know you've given updates before on like the amount of contacts they've had, but just to get updates on, like, it's never going to be definitive, but we think this might have helped people get to these kinds of resources, might have prevented future encounters with police. I think that's worth measuring too. One, I'm trying to land all my final things. But one thing, I would encourage you, I've tried to say this to all our departments, to the point Mary was making, I would love to know from you if you are encountering trends that you think certain programs or policies on the city level could help address if there are inequities that are leading to more police encounters. I know it's not your, your job is to work within the policies we set, but we don't know they need to change unless you let us know. And so certainly at the local level, but then also if, as you're thinking, we just passed our legislative priorities session. But if there's something where it's like, man, homelessness and people not having housing really is leading to a lot of police encounters. I think it is worthwhile in a cross-departmental approach to hear from you. That having a legislative priority, we're not necessarily going to solve it on our own, having a legislative priority to solve that at a broader level is super helpful. Then my last comment, or actually question is in terms of trying to reduce or prevent some of these, again, this very small subset of our population that is. Your prime clients that you're interacting with most often, do we engage in? I've heard the most recent term for it is the problem-solving policing or like trying to identify problem areas, like literally get to know. The individuals and the networks of people who tend to be involved over and over in repeat crime. Do we have any? Programs like that in Richfield?
We used to have a POP unit, which is problem-oriented policing. We sort of shifted that over to our special investigations unit. So the special investigations unit will work with. Areas that are problematic and then they'll usually correspond or, or collaborate with Jill, who is in crime prevention. And what we've done is we've made it a whole department effort rather than just a, a unit. So that the problem, when it comes in, is, is a department issue and so that we want to handle it that way. Through the different, you know, avenues and resources that we have with social workers and COPE and public health and, and all that, so that we tackle it with everything we have right away.
I could, Mary, I could, I could, one of your question, council member. Because we deal with prosecution data as well as law enforcement data. And, and you were mentioning about looking at conviction data to, to sort of measure sort of the legitimacy of an arrest, say. And actually, the best data element to look at would be prosecutorial declines. So, so when, and, and as a prosecutor, I used to do this all the time and then law enforcement didn't like it, but, but you know, you'll get a case and a prosecutor will review it just based on the statement of probable cause and the officer's statement. And if they don't believe that they have sufficient evidence to, to charge the case, then they will decline it and return it to the, to the department. And so if you look at, if you find racial disparities in declines or particular, or particular officers, that would be pretty significant evidence of, of potential bias. Whereas conviction data, there are many reasons why someone might not be convicted and a witness might show up, might not show up or a plea bargain or something like that, but the declines are based solely on the officer's statements. So if you've got an officer or, or if, 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 if you had a disparity for, for black cases involving black suspects being declined compared to other races, that, that's pretty good evidence of something going on.
Chief, were you going to say something? Oh.
No, and I think I'd, I'd let Bill talk about the declines. I mean, I, I agree with you, Bob, but we also get in, in situations where maybe the, the probable cause there was there to make the arrest. But we couldn't necessarily establish more information or data or evidence to, to get the, to get the charge. And so, you know, we will get declines for that as well. It's not necessarily that the officer, and, and they'll put that in the, in the declination letter of everything that was done correctly, but there's just not enough evidence. So that, that does happen from time to time from within, within the county, so.
Did anyone else on the council, I have some last remarks, but does anyone else have final remarks they want to share? Okay, um, so I'll be done in a month and a half, so take what I'm going to say or leave it. I'll be gone, so. From. For everybody, I don't think any of us do any of the work here for the city because of the money, because of the power, the fame, the whatever. We do this because we love our community first and foremost, every single one of us. And I think. Continuing to figure out what does it look like today to be the closest level of government to our communities and what is required of that and revisit. Systems and strategies that have been built thirty, forty, fifty years back and saying, we are here today. What can we take from the past that still is relevant and effective and look at how we work differently? We're still always going to do what local government does. But how do we do it? And so part of the conversation today was the what, what do we focus on? What is the what? But I want to make sure that we remember. That in many ways, first and foremost, the what for local government stays the same. This is the core services of, of local government that's not going to change, but how do we work differently together to achieve the, the collective goals that we have? We know there are inequities out there. We know that there's multiple causes and so what are the things that we can do partnering with our communities? And within what we do in our delivery of core services. And I just don't think we're going to genuinely address those issues. What we will do is continue to, you know, hunger down in our camps and, and these inequities continue and persist. But what we need to do is find ways to continue to build the opportunities to have these types of nuanced conversation because the inequities are in the nuances. And we have to do that with community. We have to do that with council, with our staff. We need to continue building relationships with our police. We need to continue building relationships with our community. And I, I just don't see any way around that as first and foremost, one of the things that we need to do. So I think a lot of the today was on the what, but I think the how and like just committing to. Are we going to continue to perpetuate the narratives that are out there across the country or are we saying like, we're here locally in Richfield, we have always done things in many ways differently in our communities better because of it? And we're going to continue to do that today with our police and with our community. And I think that's a very hard thing to want to do because it's super uncomfortable, but I don't see another way. So that's all the, my comments aside on, on this topic, but I just don't see this work happening and really being effective unless we do that. And so I want to make sure that that stays a part of the conversation and I think this time, three hours together. To get past that stuff, which oftentimes we don't have the time and the space in general. Can help us move in the right direction. So that's all I wanted to say. Any other comments from folks, Katie, Chief, Bob? Ben?
Can I just ask staff what next steps are? I, I was a little surprised to see. That there was no council direction sought today. I know it was mostly a presentation, but I'm guessing then that means the conversation will continue and I'm curious what the plans are for that.
Well, one of the things we're doing that has never been done in the history of our department. And, and we can get council direction as far as. Collection of data or how you want to do that. We had to make a decision when we decided to go to Tyler that we were going to archive this data. So this data today will be archived in March and will be starting from the ground up. Because what we found, and I think I talked about this earlier, and Maria, you talked about it, all we've been doing over the last fifty years is. Jumping from one system to another system to another system and just constantly putting in the data. What that has caused. Us to see is inconsistencies in the data, data not coming out right when we run it, things like that. And so we're starting from scratch. This data will be archived, we'll start from scratch, March twenty-third as far as collecting data. But any other recommendations or thoughts that you have and whether or not it needs to be another study session is up to you. And we can talk about that, but I, we had to make some decisions quickly on what we were going to do and some of the recommendations that Bob had put in the report, we had to decide quickly to put into the new software. So some, some of those recommendations, it wasn't that we, we weren't. Seeking out your input, but we had to make some decisions pretty quickly.
And that, I'm comfortable with that. I think. I'm guessing this was probably in the plans, whatever timeline you had in mind, whether it's a three months after the new data system or six or a year. Having a check-in of just how it's going, what are we seeing would be good, but I guess I'm specifically would. I would appreciate, I don't know what other council members think, I would appreciate a, a work session that we could dig more into. I mean, as much as we know, what is causing this disparity in our, I guess the input, but who's getting reported to MPD and what strategies could we, could we use there? That I, I. I can see the concern that the answer is not just more trainings, more officer policies or practices. But I, I feel like we do need to have that conversation and the police need to be key partners in that, at least. The answers may be in other departments, but I would like to continue that conversation.
Simon?
Yeah, thank, thank you. And I just echo, echo what council member Whalen had to say and just expand it beyond the data. And that, the conversations that, that we're having, you know, are, what the conversations we may need to have in six months may not be relevant to, to the data. You know, if, if the dynamics in community change, you know, if, if all of a sudden we started seeing like an increase in road failures. You know, we would be talking with Christian Asher and we would just say, well, not, not necessarily because it's like, well, this is what we need to do or the, it's like, this is, this is something that's critical, that's happening in our community and it's vital to our city moving forward and so. We're not, we're not here to micromanage, but we're, we're here to be, to, to be part of an executive conversation about the direction or what's happening. And so I think this is, this is a, a good process, but I would hate to have it just. Be, be limited to that. So I don't even want to put any like parameters of like, it should be this or it should be that, but, but just that I'm, I'm grateful for this space. It doesn't always have to be three hours and two days. But yeah, I would, I, I just appreciate it and I'd look forward to the next opportunity without a particular, without predetermining what the, the agenda would be.
No, and I appreciate those comments, both from you, or Simon and Ben. The only thing I, I need to caution you on, and it's going to be difficult for us, because when we're called out, as Ben, as you talked about, when we're called out on a call. We, we are guided under NIBERS and, and, and how we have to report crimes and, and it's going to be. It's going to be tough for us to try to, to lower that disparity without, I think, working with the community. And talking about, you know, what, what is, what is a report? You know, what can be documented, how we work with those communities, how not to be victims of crimes, things like that, to lower that disparity. But when we go out, there's a, there's a set guideline of how we have to report those crimes and, and that's where I think. When Bob looked at the data, that's where we saw the disparities rise, was in that non-discretionary time that officers have to go out and take those reports. And so that, that will be a, a lot of meetings, probably.
Any other comments? I just want to end by thanking Bob, thanking our chief and our leadership of the police department, our city manager, the community members that came, everybody, the rest of the council. I know this took so much time and like you said, Jay, from, from your staff as well, so please, I want to thank them as well. And I'll adjourn our session. Thanks, everyone.